I'm going to call and order the city council meeting for June 21st, 2011. Sondra, would you call? Are you ready?
Yep.
Would you please call the roll?
Tennant?
Here.
Farrell?
Adams?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Sudrow?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Petty?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here. Would you join me in signing the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Tonight, we will start with the mayor's announcements, proclamation, and recognition. City council meeting, presentations, reports, and discussion items. And under that, we have an appointment for the historic district commission. One is Michael Lawley, one term ending '06, 30th, and 14. And Gary Coover, one term ending '06, 30, and 14. Now for the nominating committee report. That will have to be approved by the council. And now the nominating committee report by Adella Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. We had excellent candidates, and we're excited to announce. We have two appointments to the Animal Services Advisory Board. Alan Long, a term ending 6/30/14. Barbara Denson, one nonprofit group term ending 6/30/14. Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Matthew Hoffman, one unexpired term ending 3/31/15. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Tim Mattis, one unexpired term ending 3/31/15. Environmental Action Committee, two appointments. Richard Russell, one science discipline term ending 6/30/14. James Barton, one citizen-at-large term ending 6/30/14. Fayetteville Arts Council, two appointments. Erin Jepson, one working artist term ending 6/30/14. Diane Williams, one arts and culture citizen-at-large term ending 6/30/14. Planning Commission, one unexpired term ending 3/31/14. Chris Griffin. Telecom Board, telecommunications board, Stephen Smith, one term ending 6/30/15. Michael Arig, one term ending 6/30/15. Walton Arts Center Council Incorporated, Hershey Garner, one term ending 6/30/14. Tina Hoed, one term ending 6/30/14. Walton Arts Center Foundation, Amy Knight, one term ending 6/30/14.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the appointees.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second to accept the appointees for the different committees. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Tennant?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all very much. On the consent agenda tonight, number one, we have the approval of the June 7th, 2011 city council meeting minutes. Number two, bid number 11-31, Shipley Motor Equipment of Lowell, resolution awarding bid number 11-31, and authorizing a contract with Shipley Motor Equipment of Lowell, Arkansas, in the amount of $453,279.08 for the purchase of two Mack LEU 613 trucks with Wayne Titan 40 FEL bodies for use by the Solid Waste Division. Number three, bid number 11-36, MHC Kenworth Volvo of Springdale, resolution awarding bid number 11-36, and authorizing a contract with MHC Kenworth Volvo of Springdale in the amount of $103,855.16 for the purchase of a T800 semi truck tractor for use by the water and sewer department. Number four, Walmart Foundation, Walmart 5737 donation revenue, resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $2,000 representing donation revenue from Walmart Foundation and Walmart 5737 to the Federal Fire Department for the purchase of life vests. Number five, Arkansas Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network, resolution approving a water and wastewater mutual aid agreement through the Arkansas Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network, and assigning utilities director as the authorized official. Number six, 2011 community block grant, development block grant, resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $91,911 to recognize actual amount of the 2011 Community Development Block Grant Award. Number seven, Friendship Community Care Incorporated, resolution to approve a lease agreement about 2.2 acres with Friendship Community Care Incorporated to serve developmentally disabled federal citizens. Number eight, 2011 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, resolution authorizing application for 2011 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program 50% matching grant in the amount of $9,100 for replacement of 15-body armored vests for the police department. Number nine, City Hospital Board of Trustees, resolution to appoint Conrad Odom and Hershey Garner to the City Hospital Board of Trustees, also known as the Board of Control of the Stone Hospital. Number 10, Platten Moran PLLC, resolution approving contract Platten Moran PLLC in the amount of $185,000 plus a project contingency of $20,000 for the provision of information technology project implementation and management services and approving a budget adjustment. Number 11, Gila LLC DBA Municipal Services Bureau, resolution authorizing contract with Gila LLC DBA Municipal Services Bureau for account collection services at a payment rate of 40% of amounts collected. I will entertain a motion to accept.
Second.
Consent agenda's ready. Thank you all. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Tennant?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. We have nothing under unfinished business. See new business. Number one, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, resolution authorizing application for and acceptance of a federal disaster grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA related to spring 2011 flood damage and approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $1 million. Paul?
Good morning, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, council. I guess I should say good evening. I'm all screwed up here at the moment. But what this is, as we're all painfully aware, we had substantial amount of flooding in April and May of this year. This authorizes us to make the formal application to FEMA for reimbursement. That reimbursement would be 87.5% of eligible cost reimbursements. A portion of that comes from the federal government, a portion of that comes from the state emergency management system. This would also allow us a $1 million appropriation, which I'm requesting, from the Disaster Recovery Fund. So once those approved projects are identified, they'll be appropriated, and we can go forward to the actual permanent repair of those facilities damaged. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any comments or questions for the council on this? Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. And so, do we have a motion in a second?
I move we pass the resolution.
We have a motion in a second to pass the resolution. Is there any final comments on it?
I would like to just let the staff know. Thank you. I know a lot of work went into documenting and recording and collecting all the data for this report. It's a significant amount of work. And also, our citizens were collecting all of their damage and reporting it. And so that communication was important for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's not any final comments, Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Tennant?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Number two, men, resolution 226-10, resolution amending resolution number 226-10, approving the Transportation Division overlay sidewalk projects list for 2011 by reducing overlay sidewalk projects to provide for drainage maintenance and approving a budget adjustment. Who on staff has it? Terry?
Evening, council. This is a follow-up to our presentation we did three weeks ago on looking at moving three crews from our division into drainage control and trying to take care of a large number, 150-plus service requests. And it's just to authorize that and to scale back that program for 90 days. We're looking to be ready to proceed on this based on your passage of this tonight to start that on July 5th, on the Tuesday after the 4th of July. But I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions for Terry on this? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we pass this resolution. Second?
We have a motion in a second to pass the resolution.
Mayor, I was just going to say that I know that it's not a happy thing to do anytime we have to move money like this. But I think that we've had some dire situations in our city because of drainage. And I think that in the situation that we're in, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Adella. Because I know that that's, you know, when you start having to move your funds around, it's a little bit difficult making decisions on what you're going to do. But I really believe that as much damage as we saw during this flood, that we really, we really need to do this.
That's right.
And so, it just is what it is. Okay. If there's not any, if there's not any final comments on this, Sondra, you got anything you want to say? Okay. All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Tennant?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
All right. Number three, Motorola Incorporated, resolution approving a change order to Phase Two of the radio project Motorola Incorporated in the total amount of $614,093 with $237,746 funded from the project contingency, $286,000 from the street fund, $49,901 from the police impact fees, and $40,446 from the fire impact fees, and approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $286,000. Paul?
As the council may recall, we came forward and asked for a plan to replace our radio system. This is a comprehensive radio system attached to the AWIN system, which is used by the state. It provides radio services for all of our operating departments, essentially dispatch public safety, water and sewer, streets, parking, all over the city uses this system. At that point in time, we had the funding in place for Phase One. It was approximately $6 million at that point in time, just a bit under that. We knew at that point in time we would need a Phase Two. Phase Two, we had anticipated a federal earmark that was in the works, and at that point in time, we reasonably expected that that earmark would in fact be carried over into the budget. It was not done. So to complete the project, we needed additional $600,000 to complete Phase Two. As we analyzed the funding and what we could do to replace that federal earmark, which was not approved by Congress, and take part of that money out of contingency, which is $287,000, take as much money as possible out of collected impact fees, which are eligible to be used on this project, and the balance of around $280,000, $286,000 out of the street fund now. The reason we're taking that out of the street fund is when I allocated the cost of this system throughout all of the departments and funds, we could, we allocated it based on equipment usage. We could have allocated as much as $847,000 to the street fund, which would have been their share of the equipment. However, if we remember at that point in time, we had been talking about the street fund, talking about potential changes in county road millage, things of that nature. And at the mayor's direction, attempted to take as little amount of funding out of street fund at that point in time as we could. Therefore, I'm asking for that additional money out of street fund, which is actually totals $472,000 would come out of the street fund where we could have allocated $847,000. We do have a fund balance of approximately $2.1 million in the street fund at this point in time, so there's ample reserves even after this. So I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to the head? Sarah?
Can you talk about what this upgrade to the radio system, maybe that's a question for Chief Taber as well, or someone else. But can someone talk about the need for this? Because I know that we're significantly behind.
Okay. This is Kathy Stalker of Dispatch, who is certainly closer to the project than I am, and will be happy to explain after.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Stalker, dispatch manager. Is your question about the project in entirety or just this phase?
Well, both.
The project's been needed for a long time. We knew in 2001, when we did the radio project back then, that we were still going to have some issues with coverage. And we have had issues at that time when we did that project. The consultant said that we would get maybe seven to 10 years out of that project. And now, that was in 2001, and here we are. We have had a lot of coverage issues on the, not only the west side of town, but the northeast side of town. We can tell you some stories, not good stories about officers needing help and can't get through on the radio. The other issue is the equipment now is 12 years old, and a lot of it is not covered under maintenance. So our number one issue is the coverage. The other issue is the equipment. The good thing about this project is we're connecting to the state system, the Arkansas Wireless Information Network. And so, they're going to be providing us with some extra, they have towers in this area, so we're going to get some help that way. They're going to be helping us with maintenance on some of our equipment. Also, in a disaster, we could call them and ask for some resources that we wouldn't have on our own. So it's really good project for the city and the citizens. It's really going to help us give better service. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say thank you. I think you've been great, Kathy, at explaining this to us along the way and being very transparent in the needs and to Chief Taber. And I think of all the things we do, I'm very glad to see the city do this, and glad to be a part of it, and glad to see that impact fees are being used this way, too. So thank you very much for your good communication to all of us throughout the project.
Thank you.
It's another thing that we need. A public comment that we have on this. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. You know, I appreciate the council's patience on all this. This is, like I said, this is something we probably needed for five or six years. And we just, it's just one of those things that, once again, we've got to do. It goes back to infrastructure, and it's a matter of saving lives and property and everything else. So anyway, any other final comments on this?
So I move we pass the resolution.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second to pass the resolution. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Tennant?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, City Plan 2030, a resolution approving and adopting City Plan 2030 and the future land use map as a comprehensive land use plan. Jeremy?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to very quickly say a couple of thanks before Jesse gets started with the presentation. This is the City Plan 2030, our primary guiding tool when we're looking at land use and policy decisions. I want to say thank you to the mayor, chief of staff, and also all of our department heads for lending their support and all of their staff. We began this process with 50 members of staff all throughout the city coming together to brainstorm problems they face and things that they see we can do better as a city through this plan. Because this also helps, it not only helps guide developers, citizens to act, but it guides city employees in our work programs over the next five years to do things as well. So this is an important project for all of us. I'd also like to say thank you to the council, those of you who participated in this process. You probably found it familiar to that of City Plan 2025. And hopefully you'll find some new information presented tonight. I'd also like to say thanks to the Planning Commission. We serve without pay as volunteers and have spent many hours in workshops on this specific item, as well as all the citizens that participated in this process. Jesse Foulter is our project manager on this project, as well as a master street plan, which you'll also hear a presentation tonight. And I'd also like to say thank you to Karen Minkels, who's taking her leave right now. But she certainly helped us get the ball rolling through this process, and couldn't have done it without her and all the planning staff. I feel this is a truly good and worthy document that you're about to see. It reflects our community's vision, and it also charts a path to our future for all of us to follow. And so, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Jesse Foulter to present City Plan 2030. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Good evening, Jesse.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. And thanks to Jeremy, he covered really everyone. I think I would have forgotten Karen, and I would have felt horrible about that because she got me going on this project in the first place. So thank you for that. Jeremy mentioned the city plan documents you have in front of you tonight, and the future land use map serve as a city's comprehensive land use plan. And you mentioned it at the agenda session, this is really something you have to have in place before you begin to adopt zoning regulations for your city. You really need to determine how your city's going to grow, where your city's going to grow, before you begin to regulate land use. An analogy I was trying to think of is going on vacation. You don't grab your luggage, pack it full of clothes, throw it in your trunk, get in your car, and then go, where are we going? You determine where you're going to go first and figure out what tools you'll need to get you there. And I think that's really what set City Plan 2025 apart from previous comprehensive documents that we had before that. It wasn't that we hadn't developed great goals. We've done that before. It was really the tools to help us reach those goals that were a unique part of City Plan 2025 and made it such an important document. The six goals that were adopted with City Plan 2025 came out of a very intense public participation process. There was over 800 citizens involved in that, as well as a nationally-recognized design firm, and of course, our appointed and elected officials and city staff. And those tools that came along with those six goals were our action steps or benchmarks, which is just the timeframe that we'll accomplish each of those. And they helped back up each of those six goals and gave us tasks to work on over that five-year time period. So what's happened over the five years since the adoption of City Plan 2025? Well, the city council has adopted a master transportation plan, added new context-sensitive streets, and funded an additional 13 miles of trails. Accessory dwelling units is a way to develop affordable housing, and that's now allowed by Wright after the adoption of that ordinance. The city's added over 100 acres of natural areas, and a 46-acre wetland mitigation site has received national attention from environmental organizations. We've adopted various urban zoning districts, providing us an alternative that we didn't have before to some of the more conventional commercial development patterns that we've seen in the past. We also adopted urban residential design standards, giving us better form and architecture for our multifamily developments. We've also completed two neighborhood plans that occurred after the downtown master plan, and will have a third that we'll start working on at some point in 2012. First, the question was, when we started this process, are those six goals still relevant? Should we look at changing those goals, or are those the appropriate goals, and we look at fine-tuning the plan? And we felt that those goals were still relevant even today as they were in 2006 when the plan was adopted. We know Fayetteville's grown since that adoption, and since 2000, Fayetteville's grown by 27%. As a region, we're approaching a half million people. I can't believe it's a half million people, but as a region, that's where we're about to, what we're about to achieve. And so we do feel that a proactive approach to growth is still necessary. There's also a time for opportunity. Retailers such as Walmart have traditionally built a larger store in the markets that they go into. But recently, everyone's really seen the stories about the 15,000-square-foot express stores, the 3,000-square-foot campus stores that they're starting to look at to get into different markets that they weren't able to approach with some of their larger footprint stores. And really, our zoning and development regulations need to adapt to changing trends in the marketplace as well. This change is also evident in the residential market. Over 50 years, the average size of a single-family home has grown, has expanded, and that's actually started to decrease. And the National Association of Home Builders projects that that trend and the decrease of home size will continue. It's also an important health reason to consider how our community is designed. Two in five kids ages 2 to 19 in Arkansas are overweight or at risk of becoming overweight. And that, of course, leads to other health concerns. And there are many contributors to health problems, not just community design, but it is one of those contributors. So how your community is designed is very important. Do you have to drive to every location that you want to go to, or is there an option to walk or bike? How is your community designed? I said there's also an economic benefit looking at how your community develops. A study in Florida looked at the annual tax yield per acre based on land use. They found that the three highest yielding land development patterns were all mixed use. So looking at that data and these trends, we realize that the six goals are still relevant, and that we would move forward on the project as fine-tuning. And as Karen actually mentioned, she always called it a tune-up, is what we'd be doing to the plan. And so that's how we approached the public. As Jeremy mentioned, we had a number of meetings with staff, with the public, with the Planning Commission and city council to get input and guidance last year. And in those meetings, we also, for the first time, I think, put the public and the participants in the role as a developer. They were able to utilize game pieces and construct their own development. And we're able to get some great feedback from them on that. Some of the results that we pulled out of those public meetings, when we asked about infill revitalization, where that should occur, it was actually quite evenly split between our major corridors, our street corridors like MLK or College Avenue, the city core, and what everyone thinks is the center of our city, and then transit-oriented development nodes like along our rail line. An interesting result of the development exercise is that the number-one housing choice was not the largest. It was not the 8,000-square-foot lot. It was the 5,000-square-foot lot was the choice most utilized by the participants. And then row houses were also a top selection. And then out of the non-residential uses that they're able to utilize, it was an office that they used most or commercial. It was mixed use that they included most in their development exercise. So we took all that information from the Planning Commission, city council, from the public participation, and we looked at ways to update the goal while keeping the six goals, or updating each of the action steps while keeping the six goals in place. And there's, I believe, 22 action steps. I'm not going to go through all of those, but I do want to talk about one or two as it relates to each one of the goals, kind of give you an idea of how we're proceeding forward with this document. As we look at infill revitalization, we're realizing that infrastructure can be a real limiting factor. We're realizing that, I think, more than ever, as infill is becoming more of an attractive product that we see developers going forward with. And we realize that water and sewer infrastructure and even drainage sometimes can limit the potential for infill revitalization, where there might be a good opportunity to redevelop an aging piece of property. The lack of infrastructure there may stall that project or not allow it to happen. And so as part of the neighborhood master plan process, we will include an analysis of our infrastructure. So we have a better understanding of where our limitations are and where the opportunities are. For discouraging suburban sprawl, we realize that there's properties on the outskirts of our city that already have development rights. It's just a matter of time of when they will develop, but what we'd like to be able to provide is a different development pattern or a different alternative to those landowners and developers. They may get the same number of units on that piece of property, but there's an opportunity where they could preserve more open space, more trees, and more envi- environmentally sensitive features. Traditional town form, we've worked on commercial districts, multifamily districts, as I mentioned before. But the infill projects, we, we do see a lot of those on the single-family side, and there's an opportunity to create appropriate standards where you can get neighbors in a neighborhood assurance of the project that will be built there. And that makes it easier on the development side and, uh, presents a better product for that neighborhood. And growing the livable transportation network, we want to continue to develop complete streets, look at our context-sensitive cross-sections, as we'll talk about more tonight, and as we've worked on over the last couple of years, ensure that we're providing transportation options for all users. Goal five, assembling an enduring green network. This was actually a goal we talked about quite a bit, because we didn't know really what the focus of this goal was, exactly what we wanted to accomplish as a city. And so we asked that of the participants last year. We said, what is an enduring green network to you? And so we actually got a lot of short answer feedback from all the participants. We took all the key terms and phrases that we heard and put that into a new description for what this is. And it's really, it's a network that connects people and nature through a map system of trails and green infrastructure. This network recognizes and assembles the ecological assets in Fayetteville that need to be preserved while providing a lasting connected corridor for wildlife. And so we asked ourselves, how do we create a connected corridor for wildlife? How do we map the system of trails and green infrastructure? And by looking at our floodplain data, our parks, our conservation areas, and with a huge amount of help from the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association and the green infrastructure study that they had completed shortly before this, we were able to develop an enduring green network map. And really, it was a way to identify large areas where a smaller network could be created at some point in the future. And so a network connection would be more like this. Opportunities for attainable housing. In this goal, we're really trying to look at ways to create opportunities for others to create attainable housing. We really want to look at land efficiency. Are you building one house on a hundred feet of street and water and sewer drainage, or maybe you're building two? You're getting more efficient land use, and that's, cost savings on the development side should translate to cost savings on the purchasing side. You also need to look at other development patterns as you would on the outskirts of the city, on the interior of the city where it's more challenging to develop an awkward piece of property. You have to provide some different options for the development community. We also want to look at and educate people and make them realize that there's a link between your cost of living and which you can afford in a house. Most people do understand that, but maybe to the degree that it really can affect how much you can put towards a home. And this is starting to garner a lot of national attention, especially on the transportation side. A lot of people move away from the center of the city to find a cheaper home. Well, they lose that cost savings because their transportation, transportation costs have just been increased. And that link is really starting to be made evident through a lot of national studies, and we want to make sure that that information is being provided. The same is true on energy efficiency, you know, small improvements in your home's energy efficiency can decrease your utility costs, which is another major expense that you have. And we're hoping through, uh, ideas like green building codes, if the city of Fayetteville can help assist people in increasing the ener, energy efficiency and decreasing the cost of living. So there's a whole list of, of benchmarks or our action steps in the completed City Plan 2030 document that you're, uh, should please take a look at and really expand on some of the items that I talked about tonight. I do want to move on to how this translates into the future land use map, how this ties in to everything else that we've discussed. I think of the future land use map as kind of a visual guide. It's one of the first documents I think the development community really looks at when they come in. They look at a piece of property and they say, what's the city's future for this area? And this is one of those great illustrative, uh, documents that they can look at, and it reflects the six goals that we've established. The future land use map is comprised of ten land use designations from rural to urban, civic, industrial, uh, parks, et cetera. But there's really four main ones, and they show it very well on a map this size. Uh, that's rural, which is the green areas around the edge of the city generally. Yellow areas, which are the residential neighborhood, the blue areas, which are your city neighborhoods, and the purple areas are the urban center. And then you do see some smaller red zones near the center of the city. Those are the, the master plans that the council's adopted, Walker Park Master Plan and Fayette Junction, as well as the downtown master plan. Rural areas are encouraged to conserve and preserve farmland, woodlands, uh, pastures. And at this point, there's just low development potential. And the reason is, is they don't have the infrastructure really to support suburban, suburban or urban densities. They don't have the water and sewer infrastructure. They don't have the street infrastructure generally. It's usually very narrow, two-lane roads. They also don't have the public services to support growth in these areas, such as fire and police. And so in the short, short term, you see these as low development potential areas on the map, and you note them at the outside of the city where a lot of those services aren't being provided currently. Residential neighborhood areas are predominantly or nearly exclusively residential. Uh, they do pro, provide a variety of housing types. But as you can see in the image on the right, they do recognize that low-intensity non-residential uses can be appropriate. The small office here, many may recognize, and is surrounded on all sides by single-family homes, but is a great part of this neighborhood. City neighborhood areas are more dense than the residential neighborhood areas, and they provide a wider variety of uses, wider variety of housing types from single-family to multifamily. But they also incorporate a great deal more of the non-residential uses. These areas are, though, intended to serve residents of Fayetteville rather than a regional population. And that's because our urban center areas are more of that, that urban draw as they've been described. Uh, these are the most intense and dense and expensive or large footprint development sites that you'll see in the city. Tend to be adjacent to major thoroughfares with large areas dedicated to parking. Although it's the expectation consistent with goal three, which is traditional town form, that vacant properties would develop into traditional mixed-use centers where people could live, work, and play in the same location. So tonight, as I said earlier, you have the City Plan document and you have the future land use map together, making up Fayetteville's comprehensive land use plan. These plans together are really intended to provide guidance to staff, to elected and appointed officials, to the public, to the development community. When we're talking about rezonings, we're talking about planned zoning districts and looking at land use decisions such as annexations. As I stated at the beginning of the presentation, you have to determine what your destination is first before you begin to regulate land use. I believe that our destination is a great city, a great Fayetteville, where infill and revitalization is more important than sprawl, where traditional form is desired over some of the highway commercial developments that we've seen over the past, where transportation is more than about the automobile, where our most sensitive environmental features are preserved for people and for wildlife, and where housing opportunities are available for all Fayetteville residents. The final question that we asked of our participants last year in the input processes was, give us one word that you would want to use to describe a great Fayetteville twenty years from today. These are the words that they gave us. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. As Jeremy mentioned, we do have a master, uh, master street plan, uh, presentation for later on when you want to move the discussion to that point. Thank you.
What questions do we have? Jesse? What do y'all think?
It's impressive.
Good question.
Sure, Matthew.
Uh, Jesse, do you want us to table this tonight or to pass this tonight, or?
I think it would be appropriate to table it, allow all the information to be reviewed. If any public comment comes up between now and then, I think it would be just fine to table it to the next meeting, for sure.
Okay.
What, Justin, your question? What, uh, pub, public comment do we have on this? Come on, let, Bob. Sure.
Bob Calk, uh, resident of Fayetteville and a cheerleader for Enduring Green Networks. Uh, I want to thank the city staff and the City Planning, uh, Commission for the work they did on this, and in particular, the work they did on developing specific hot two goals, on goals two and five. Two is, uh, limiting sprawl and five is assembling the Enduring Green Network. Uh, as Fayetteville grows, these goals and the specific objectives they have there will help us, uh, grow in the right direction, uh, and ensure that the Enduring Green Network advances over time. Uh, there's a lot going on already in the Enduring Green Network area, uh, ranging from the efforts of the Habitat Council that is sponsored by the Environmental Action Committee, whose goal is to try to develop habitat in people's yards, businesses, uh, lots, uh, schools, and parks. Uh, the corridors, which are the, uh, critical part of the Enduring Green Network, are obviously, uh, promoted by the trail program we have. And the ordinance you passed a couple of months ago on the streamside protection is another one that, in fact, does contribute to corridors, uh, through the area. Jesse alluded to the green infrastructure planning project we did, and in that project, the most threatened habitat we had was prairies. And there's an incredible amount of things going on on prairies, ranging from the contractor that runs the city's east side wastewater treatment plant having, doing some, having done some restoration work over there and restored a small section of prairie there. Uh, the Parks Department, uh, doing a prairie restoration at Lake Fayetteville, uh, next to the Butterfield Coach Trail. Uh, Audubon, uh, has an effort going on to restore Wilson, the Wilson Springs area. And of course, the, the most notable prairie here in town is the award-winning, winning Woolsey, uh, wet prairie. Uh, and that one is particularly exciting because with the wetland mitigation credits, it appears that there's a possibility of setting up a wetland mitigation that can in fact be used to expand that prairie, uh, that wet prairie to a much larger area, because the city, I think, does own a fair amount of land over there already. Uh, and that is just absolutely amazing and terrific. The twenty thirty plan, uh, is a guide, and this guide will allow us to progress in the right, uh, the right direction, I think. And I urge you all to adopt this plan at the earliest possible moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Bob?
Can I ask you a question? Um, if you could make any changes to the plan, would you, and what might they be?
Uh, I've never really thought of that, and I, I think, you know, when I read it and I looked at it, I said, you know, the parts of it, particularly the ones that I pay the most attention to, goals two and goal five, are pretty doggone good for planning documents. They have all the things in there, I think, that we need to do right now. Uh, they allude to the things that we need to do at some point in the future. Uh, but it's too soon to do those. Things like, um, going out and actually buying critical pieces of land. Uh, I think it's too early to, to be talking about that right now, because there's many, many things that we can do, uh, with the resources we have and with the various programs that are going on. So I think in answering your question, when I read through it, nothing like that occurred to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Bob.
I'm Jim Lobler, and I live out in West Fayetteville. Uh, long time no see, trying to stay, keep myself low. Uh, watching the presentation, it concerned me that I don't hear negatives or, you know, what ifs. Uh, most people in Fayetteville would call me a city boy. I was raised in A- Atlanta when it was under five hundred thousand people. Now they're screaming and going crazy because they have a sewer system and a septic system that can't handle, you know, three or four million people. Uh, Dallas, Texas, same thing. I lived out on the perimeter and watched Dallas when it was about seven hundred thousand people. Downtowns are just incredibly hard places to fix. Uh, you'll also find that when you start stacking people and you start hearing neighbors all around you, people become somewhat dissatisfied and, and it appears to be, uh, that urban areas do have a tendency to have a lot of crime. I'm not saying these aren't good goals. I wish everything was green, you know? Even the animals, you know, like animals, but you start bringing deer in close to people in large populations, you're going to see, uh, uh, deer ticks. Uh, you're gonna, uh, with skunks, it's rabies, you know? I hope that you'll look at both sides of this and make sure that when you do the density, you do it, you know, where you and nature are not in conflict and where you don't get people fighting each other. I think we're territorial, you know, if you want to call it territorial animals, and I think it's important to, uh, keep that in mind. So, all I can do is point to the projects in places like New York and on and on. So please keep a, a balanced approach as you put, put this into action.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Who else?
Hello, members of the council. John Pennington, uh, resident of Fayetteville. And I would just like to say that I think the planning group that put this together did an outstanding job and that the plan as it is, uh, currently can really help with one problem in town that, uh, could get worse if it was not, uh, managed, uh, ahead of time. And that is with the infill and revitalization, uh, so that less area that can absorb rainfall and let water drain to the soil, uh, will become, uh, pervious or, uh, impervious, you know, concrete and asphalt such, uh, which will increase the amount of runoff over time and can increase to, uh, some of the flooding or drainage issues that, that are currently in town. Uh, and so I think that is a great aspect of the city plan, uh, for twenty thirty. And I just wanted to go ahead and just drive that one point home while I have the opportunity. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Who else? See none, I'll bring it back to the council. Do you understand we need to table this, kid? We need to make a motion to table this, since it's a resolution?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to table to him. Next time, when do we want to? Two weeks? Everybody good?
Two weeks.
Okay. All right. There's not any other discussion on it. Son, would you please call?
Tenet?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sudra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Okay, number five, revised master street plan, re, resolution approving and adopting a revised master street plan and street cross-sections. Who has this?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a handout. Uh, this is from the master street plan cross-sections. I left with amendment, I should have said a minor amendment to, uh, some language in our alleys, which all, uh, really was a discussion point brought up by the Planning Commission. And before I jump into my presentation, uh, about a, a standard that we put in for our solid waste department, uh, where we'll have solid waste pickup on alleys. And we talked to, to them about, uh, some concerns with that. And we put in a standard for a twenty-foot separation from alley to the back of a building, ultimately amounted to a twenty-foot setback. We heard some concerns at the street committee and at Planning Commission also. And so we went back in and we modified that language to remove that twenty-foot setback. We worked with our solid waste division, uh, since street committee and came up with something that they were comfortable with. All of the, the main staff was there for that discussion. And so really what all this changed is that it's now a ten-foot separation from the edge of the alley to a structure overhang. We just don't want anything getting in the way of the, of the solid waste arm as it's picking up those trash carts. So that's the only change. So we went ahead and just modified that language and provided you with a revised handout. So the master tran, uh, master street plan going, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
So one of us will, and I think Max won't, brought this up with the street, and you would have to make this amendment?
Please.
Okay.
So the master street plan, uh, going back a little to our city plan goals, most closely related to our livable transportation network. That's, it's part of, uh, this plan to create a livable transportation network. It's part of this plan to create a livable transportation network. The master street plan is comprised of streets that, the location of the streets, the classification of the streets, and then we also have the document, within the city plan document, that provides you with cross-sections for each of these, so actual width and how that area is developed. And the goal of this is really to create an efficient circulation system throughout the city. We use the plan to inform the public and the development community about where these future streets will be and what the classification will be. We also use it to obtain right-of-way for future streets so that we can create an efficient and connected street network. Five years ago, context-sensitive street design became an important part of how we would design streets in the future, and we also adopted an access management ordinance in 2008 to help us with street location and spacing. So using this data that was developed in 2007, 2008, we worked with the planning commission to come up with revisions to our master street plan and those cross-sections. Those amendments included new streets, shown on the slide here. We showed a number of new streets in areas with high development potential. Even though that development potential may not be in the near term, especially when you look at our future land use map, we do not intend for some of this area shown here to be near-term development, but it does have high development potential. And so, again, trying to take a proactive approach to development, we went ahead and located new streets in these undeveloped areas. Context-sensitive street design, this is an example of some additional cross-sections that we've added to the master street plan classification list. A collector street standard right-of-way of 59 feet. What we did in this situation is we created three collector streets that all fit within a 59-foot street cross-section. So as a new development comes in, they're gonna dedicate 59 feet of right-of-way, but we can determine based on the land use, the context around the street, what's most appropriate, and that's the street section that would be constructed. The pavement would stay the same, it's mostly just striping that would change. And then, as development patterns change, as that evolves over time, the street can evolve with that, again, keeping the most appropriate context based on the land uses surrounding that street. As I mentioned, we had worked with our solid waste and fire departments on some concerns that they've had over the last couple of years with our alley standards. We'll continue to work with that staff. What we put in the master street plan document was a list to address some of those concerns. There might be a few that will require some ordinance amendments that we'll work with those staff members on, but this was really just trying to alleviate some concerns with alley service. We also were able to reduce our right-of-way requirements for our principal and minor arterial streets. Ultimately, this is less cost on the front end of development, but it's also lost less cost for the city and long-term maintenance of our streets and the amount of right-of-way that we have to maintain. Again, this is about being efficient with our land use and our land resources. And although that was a really short presentation compared to the previous one, trust me, the process has been long. That's all I have on the master street plan. I believe Jeremy has some additional information on discussions around Howard, Nickel, and Rupel Road, and I'll let him take it from his point.
Okay.
Thank you.
As Jesse mentioned, when we're going through the master street plan, we looked at both the street cross-sections and created some new ones. We also removed some. We also looked at the actual map that Jesse referred to, the master street plan map, copies of which hang in city planning. Unbelievably, people use it all the time, come in, see what color street goes through their property, or what, if they're buying a property, is that affected by our master street plan? Generally, streets that are below collector levels are not indicated on the master street plan, so they're either going to be a residential, or a local, or something of that nature, and we determine that by how much area a street might serve, how much use that street might have. But for collectors and above, collectors, minor arterials, principal arterials, those kinds of streets, we do classify those within our master street plan. We had about 40 different changes when we started looking at our master street plan that staff and the planning commission kind of worked through, some of which did not change, some of which did. As Jesse mentioned, a lot of those are new streets on the master street plan, where there was not a street before, and we looked at topography streams, where properties are located, where structures are located, to find a potential alignment for a street. Some streets were existing streets where we changed the classification. We either downgraded it, or we upgraded it. One of the changes that we did not propose, and that we're gonna talk about tonight, is the Rupel Road and Howard Nickel Road area. This was recommended by the planning commission. It reclassifies a section of the Rupel Road, Howard Nickel Road, as it changes names there, from a principal arterial parkway, which is what it was called in the previous version, to a collector street as it traverses through a neighborhood in northwest Fayetteville and connecting up to Highway 112. Rupel Road is a partially existing, partially planned arterial that connects the most rapidly growing section of Fayetteville from Martin Luther King Jr. Expressway, or Boulevard, to Weddington, up to Mount Comfort. It connects to Highway 112, ultimately Garland, Gregg, and then even over into the mall area where it changes names to Van Ash. To date, the city has invested approximately $21 million in this corridor through either cost shares with developers, through developer contributions on projects, or through planned projects that we have on the books in our transportation bond program or federal earmarks. About $12 million of those are in planning stages right now, the extension of Van Ash that you all actually added to the priority list, the street committee added to the priority list in the last year, as well as the Rupel South connection to MLK. Those connections really do a lot to connect up the west side of Fayetteville. When I say the west side of Fayetteville, I'm really meaning west of 540. I think south Fayetteville, most people don't think of west of 540, north and east. This is really connecting all of that west Fayetteville to the rest of the community. One of the reasons that's important, or so important, is because there is a kind of a big dam that segregates west Fayetteville from the rest of the city, and that's I-540. There are only so many areas where the levee's broken that you can get through, and those are where the interchanges occur. So it's important to have, where we have the opportunity, to connect local streets, which include collectors, arterials, up to the rest of the community in order to make our street system connected. This level, I think, of investment symbolizes the importance of this corridor in traffic management in Fayetteville. As you can see from the map, multiple corridors such as this are on our master street plan. It's not just one, we have multiple ones, and they're actually spaced pretty similarly. Rupel is our far west one, we've got Gregg, which turns into Razorback, is another north-south corridor. We've got College Avenue, obviously, probably the most developed one. Just off the screen there, you have Crossover Road, and we've actually proposed some more arterials that, again, spaced similarly along the north-south axis of Fayetteville. As you all know, east-west corridors are much more difficult. We had a whole project this last year trying to determine how east-west corridors can be fitted within the city because of our topography, and we've added some to the master street plan as well. These multiple corridors provide a hierarchy of traffic movement throughout our city, from residential and local streets to collectors and arterials, and eventually up to the interstate system to connect us with the rest of the region. Just a little bit of history on the specific area being considered to be amended down to a collector street. At least since the 1990s, our records show that planners, engineers, planning commissioners, and elected city councils have had this area designated as some sort of arterial connection. Before any development was even proposed or occurred in this area, a proposal was presented in 2003 for a new neighborhood. It was originally called North Hills Subdivision. It's now known as Estates at Salem Hills. Part of this proposal included constructing a wide, sweeping curve as part of the arterial system. It also dedicated 90 feet of right-of-way for future construction of a four-lane road. At that point in time, it was simply a four-lane road, not with the boulevard in the middle. The subdivision was finished in late 2003, and houses began to be constructed in 2004. In 2005, the city council reclassified all of Rupel Road, from the terminus on the south end to MLK, all the way up to Gregg, or up to Highway 112 as a principal arterial, to, quote, I think this is from the resolution, "provide an essential transportation corridor and plan for an efficient and effective transportation network with functional hierarchy of street classifications." In 2007, this designation was reaffirmed by the city council, though it was renamed Parkway at that time. The Parkway designation no longer exists within our classifications. We felt it better just to leave it as principal arterial, not confuse the matter, although all the principal arterial designations now have that boulevard cross-section listed within them. With the reduction of right-of-way necessary now that we're proposing, it's no longer necessary to obtain additional right-of-way to get four lanes with the boulevard. Our proposals show that you can do that within 87 feet, which is within the 90 feet dedicated through this particular neighborhood. During discussions at the planning commission, there were many comments about aesthetics, obviously, and then safety, I think, was a big issue that was brought up by many within this neighborhood, Estates at Salem Hills, the area that was reclassified. From our perspective, we believe that a four-lane road can be attractive, it can be safe, obviously it can be efficient. We believe that just because you see College Avenue is the same color on the map, it doesn't necessarily mean that all four and five-lane streets are constructed like that, especially now. Boulevards historically have been and can be good addresses, and we found some examples in a brief Google search. This is Pleasant Valley Drive in Little Rock. It's about the same cross-section, although the boulevard's actually a little wider. This is a four-lane road with a principal arterial in their classification as well. It's got a boulevard down the middle, four lanes, two lanes on either side, with houses facing and accessing the street. They're set back a little further, and it's a little hard to see in this picture, but if you go to Google Earth, you can pull this up and look at all. It's actually quite a long corridor in Little Rock. This is in Sacramento. This is actually a pretty similar cross-section that we have. Again, houses facing the street that access with driveways off of the arterial with the boulevard in the middle and turnarounds at designated locations. And then this one is in Portland, where actually they took, in this particular case, I believe they utilize both lanes during peak hours. So during rush hour, they'll actually have two lanes going in either direction, and then off-peak hours, they'll actually use it for parallel parking, so they have double benefit. And as you can see, these houses also face the street. Some of them are accessed by alleys, some of them are not. So again, if you can go to Google Earth and take a look at these different examples. This is really the intended cross-section, I think. When you look at the, when you dimension it out in Google Earth, you can find that it's a very similar dimension of what we found. All that to say, we don't think necessarily that all streets are created equal. We feel that you can design a really great four-lane boulevard street and have it be a great address in Fayetteville and any other city, and that's what our intent would be with this master street plan. We would not be proposing it to you if we didn't think it was possible otherwise. In this particular occasion, the planning commission voted five to four, after a lot of discussion, a lot of public input, to recommend changing the classification of Rupel and Howard Nickel Road from an arterial at the south part of the Estates at Salem Hills subdivision through the subdivision curve, so that's where it stops at the blue color, goes north and then further east, and then goes to Highway 112 where's that curve intersection there. As you're aware, staff does not recommend this amendment. We request the city council to amend the document that's before you to keep the intent of this arterial intact. We feel this is an important issue, not necessarily for construction in the near future, because we don't have a budget for this project, we don't have it on any prioritized plan, but we obviously, as staff and you as elected officials or city councils before you, have made decisions to spend almost $21 million to create this corridor over time. Arterials aren't created overnight. As you can see from Crossover Road, we've been talking about widening that for years and years, it's just about to begin. Mount Comfort Road recently was widened to four lanes, and it has supported development since the 1960s with subdivisions constructed out of it. So it takes time for those things to happen. It may just be aligned on a map today, but it does affect policy decisions, and we feel it's important enough to recommend that it be changed back to an arterial, and that is our recommendation. I believe that's all we have on the master street plan this evening. We do have a presentation by the neighborhood, so I'm gonna pull that up from the neighborhood of Estates at Salem Hills, and so you can hear their recommendations as well.
Any questions for Jeremy on this?
I have one question. Jeremy, can you estimate how much right-of-way along this corridor has already been acquired in percentage-wise?
Almost all of the, let me go back real quickly. So within the corridor, if you start with MLK on the very far south end, there's really not any right-of-way because there's been no development occurred on the south end, all the way up to Persimmon. However, beginning at Mountain Ranch Subdivision, Al Creek Elementary, Rupel Road, Boys and Girls Club, the city actually acquired all of that right-of-way south of Weddington to Persimmon and built that section of street at a cost of $800,000 for the Boys and Girls Club as part of the Reynolds Foundation grant. That was really one of the first projects that we started out on, you know, when we identified this corridor as an arterial to connect up to west Fayetteville. I don't have a percentage, so I'm gonna preface, I don't have a percentage in my head, but if you take a look then north of Weddington, the Lynx Project that Lindsey did contributed about $1 million to that improvement, two-lane road with a boulevard with future improvements. We have assessments for those improvements as well. A new bridge will obviously have to be constructed, so that'll be a significant amount of money to do that in the future. And then north of there, the city constructed a portion of the Rupel Road to get to Holt Elementary School, and that's been continued on. We cost shared with developers to build the bridge, a four-lane, or a wide bridge to accommodate that type of growth to continue on to the north. So in our opinion, the corridor has been established. It could move, it could certainly move. Would we lose some of that investment? Most likely. Would it still function as a street? It would still function as a street, so it's not going to go away by any means, it would still be utilized. But we feel like this is the, over the last decade or so, this has been the identified corridor, and that's what we've been planning towards and engineering has been planning towards as well.
Sir?
Can you show the picture of Sacramento and then Portland?
That's T Street in Sacramento.
What is it?
T Street?
T Street, and then Portland?
Yeah.
So I haven't seen anything like that in the four-lane roads that we're building, as far as having. I've been, I mean, I would love it if we, if I thought we actually were going to build a four-lane with a swaled island with trees all down the middle, but our four lanes are cement sheets that roll out, and I think that's lovely, but when, if, that's what I have a little bit of struggle with, is we keep talking about four lanes that look like that, but I don't see that being built.
I think part of the challenge is that the four lanes we've built thus far have all been state highways, or state highway department building those. They have standards that they have to go by, those standards are set, they live by them and we live by them, and they're connecting regions. I think we've already committed to you in street committee meetings that we're gonna be looking at Van Ash a little differently, we're gonna be looking at Rupel Road a little differently, because those are city streets that have a similar function, but they can be designed with the context in mind. It goes right back to that concept of context-sensitive design. College Avenue, which is also a state highway, looks very different in downtown than it does where it turns, you know, out by the mall, or north of North Street. There's a very different context there, and so what we'd like to get back to is designing streets that have the context of the surrounding land use in mind and can respond to changes in context, because as you all know, as the city grows up, it might be a single-family house one day. I'm not speaking really necessarily out to northwest Fayetteville, but Gregg Avenue may have a single-family house one day, or Garland is a good example, then it may have a multifamily house, then it may have some mixed use, a small barber, then it may be an office, and then it may be a commercial establishment. So over time, those land uses change. We'd like to develop streets that can accommodate those changes over time. I think this is, these are examples of things that we would like to see as well and present to you as options for development.
So in the area that you're mentioning that you're interested in changing back, is it wide enough? Where the houses are now, is it wide enough now for something like that?
The right-of-way that's within at least the subdivision in the curve, there's 90 feet of right-of-way dedicated. Before, there was supposed to be, before the master street plan was changed to accommodate the curve, it was required to have 90 feet in the north-south leg and 110 feet in the east-west leg. When this project, when the subdivision came through, the developer wanted to make the curve, they could get more lots on both sides, there's some topography issues on the northwest side, so they changed this model to reflect the 90 feet throughout the entire width. If you'll refer to our, the cross-sections that you have in your packet, our principal arterials show an 87-foot width for the full cross-section. So yes, it can be accommodated within that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron?
Would you go back to that Portland picture?
Sure.
Are those cars parked?
They are.
Well, see, to me, I
Well, see, to me, I appreciate the word lovely, but it looks to me like we are paving paradise and putting in a parking lot in those, to use the words of a song, in front of those people's houses. You said there'll be, there, in one of these pictures and maybe this one, four lanes, two of them are used as parking areas when they're not needed for...
Correct.
Why would we do that to a beautiful neighborhood?
Okay, that's a pretty difficult.
I mean, why would we, if we don't have to have four lanes, why would we plan four lanes and make it a parking area?
I think when the city would make the decision to construct four lanes in this area, it would be when we needed four lanes in this area. So, and likely after the time we would need four lanes in this area. If you use Mount Comfort as an example, that's a street that needed improvement for many, many years before the city was able to actually acquire, get funds to improve that, improve that to a four-lane section. So we were well behind the curve on that particular street improvement. I don't think we would go out, we don't have any plans to go out in the near future and construct a four-lane section through this neighborhood. However, the line on the map allows us the ability to plan for that if this area comes, becomes annexed one day in the future. It's really the only street we've identified on the west side of Fayetteville, whereas the east side and central side have about three or four of them. This is the only one on the west side that we've identified as a major corridor that can connect all the way from our east-west MLK up to the Van Ash Highway 112 section of town. So we felt it was an important planning tool to leave that in there, not to stop two arterials and change them down to a collector from a four-lane to a two-lane section or a three-lane section. But you're exactly right, it'll stay a two-lane section for many years to come.
Thank you.
Great.
Well, I appreciate the fact that it is the main corridor. I mean, and I had supported some of the earlier planning. Of course, we have a long way to go south of Weddington. I mean, that's, that hasn't been completed very far south to meet up with Martin Luther I never have liked this sharp curve. I mean, to me, that negates the idea of a, the same thing we have with crossover. I mean, you're talking two different, I mean, crossover is basically pretty straight. This makes this sharp turn. One thing I wanted to note, and I'm sure the people that are going to speak for this will probably mention this too, but they brought my attention to this, that in the 2030 plan under the Goal Four, Objective C, it states that multiple corridors instead of single overused ones are better, and two two-lane roads, quote, "two two-lane roads are better than one four-lane road." Traffic can be easily dispersed within a road network rather than all motors having to depend on one major thoroughfare. And I don't understand, I mean, we are, we are, I mean, North Salem Road runs adjacent to this, right?
For a section, yes, as a collector.
So you have a parallel there. You have Dean Solomon, you've, we've networked Mount Comfort going over to 540. You know, I think, and those are all going to be basically two-lane roads, right? They're not, none of those are planned to be four-lane. And I don't know if anyone has actually traveled often from Weddington by the golf course, but that, you know, goes like this. I mean, it's very slow. I don't know why there's four lanes there, for what purpose. I mean, you've got two cars just going like this. No one, I mean, you never see two cars on those two lanes. So you've already kind of, you know, we've already kind of designed that in such a way that it's very slow. I mean, it's, not that we want this to be a speedway, but I mean, that is kind of the idea. Whenever you build a four-lane road, you are intending to move traffic, not like through a neighborhood, and that's what you feel like whenever you go by the golf course. And it's my understanding that is the plan, that's not going to change, right? That's the way that looks, the way it's finished now. Do you know what I'm talking about?
By the golf, by the Lynx?
Basically, from Weddington north on Rupel Road till you get to Mount Comfort Road.
It would change, yes. Only one side of that is constructed currently. The other side is, I think, one lane.
But it's going straightened out?
At the north end of it, yes. So if you're at Mount Comfort Road...
No, well, I realize that Mount Comfort Road, I'm not talking about that part. I'm talking about the road between, between Weddington and Mount Comfort.
Correct.
On that drive, it's very curvy, and I don't, you're not going to straighten that all out.
Parts of that, just at the north end, but everything else is really set. Yes, that's correct.
That's what I thought. So, you know, I don't know. I mean, I feel like, I mean, I want to hear the rest of the conversation. I understand the staff and I guess the administration is supportive in keeping this a four-lane through the neighborhood. And it's unfortunate that that development was done. I mean, I know it's outside the city, and it's unfortunate that the city didn't have more control over the way it was designed so that it would allow for a four-lane going through it. But, I mean, these houses front the, you know, that street, and I've been out there, and I know a lot of the members have, and it's really difficult now, at this point, to say, you know, let's put a four-lane through it. I know councils have been reluctant to do anything, you know, with Greg Street for the same reason, it's established neighborhoods. Those are in the city limits. And I think that the city councils in the past have always been very sympathetic with neighborhoods, even though we feel like that we could have done some things that would have certainly eased traffic, and Greg's a real good example of that. But you're dealing with neighborhoods, and they were established. They were established a long time ago. This neighborhood wasn't established that long ago, but it's there now. And so I'm going to have a lot of difficulty now supporting an amendment that would take this back to the plan that the staff recommended. And I generally don't like to do that. I generally like to go along with the staff and with the mayor, but that's the way I feel right now.
Anybody else?
Isn't there a comment?
Oh, yeah, I have another public comment. What comments do we have? Now, everybody keep in mind, give one turn of the microphone, listen on, and bring you back if asked. Introduce yourself, where you live.
My name is Michael Maldon, I'm a CPA here in Fayetteville, and I'm the current president of the State's Salem Hills subdivision. I live at 3623 Howard Nickel Road, and I enjoyed the presentation I did. The pictures on there, they caught me off-guard a little bit, but he had to go as far as he did, or the staff did, to find pictures, because none of those were in Fayetteville. So that kind of reaffirmed our position that maybe this isn't the right thing for Fayetteville. The one in Little Rock, I didn't see a single house in that picture. The one in Portland, streets parked, I didn't see a driveway in the picture, because they had to park on the street. So just, I agree with some of your comments, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. But let me personalize it just for a little bit. Fourteen years married today, sorry, Angel, I'm not celebrating our anniversary with you, right? But this is important, so that's why I'm here. It's important for the safety of our kids, our three-and-a-half kids, all under the age of seven, that I want to do what we can to protect. I can't imagine for the life of me, a second, third, fourth grader wanting to cross a five-lane road like Seventy-One, like crossover's going to be, anything, you know, where people have opportunities to be like you can't on a four-lane road. To go play with the neighbor across the street, that's our subdivision, that's our development. When I bought the property, bought an empty lot four or five years ago and built there, nobody said, hey, go check the master street plan. You know, I love real estate. I've had my fair share of properties, and on my mental checklist, whenever you buy a property, have it inspected, make sure the neighbors aren't trash, you know, blow up. I never thought once to check, you know, is there going to be a five-lane road running through the middle, right in front of your house? No, that's not one of the things that you do. If I would have known, I wouldn't have done. So I really think it was a mistake at the time. Now, Charles, I really need to correct that. I would really appreciate your serious consideration in doing so. Bob Costrell, we've got several neighbors here, even some neighbors on down on Howard Nickel. Probably would like to say a few words, but thank you in advance.
Thank you.
You all know me anyway. We've been here how many times over the last four years? What I passed out in terms of hard copy are the presentation here, which I will try to keep brief, and also the letter that I had published on behalf of our Property Owners Association in today's Northwest Arkansas Times, which summarizes the points that I'm going to make here. Let's see. So why don't we first, sorry? Oh, can I do this myself? Oh, I got my own control. As was mentioned, there are about ten of our neighbors here, both in our development that you've heard from before, as well as the section of Howard Nickel Road that goes from our development on out to 112. A number of them are here as well. So I want to begin by thanking the Planning Commission. I know at least one member is here tonight, Hugh Ernest. They devoted many, many hours and much effort to this issue. Seven of the nine members made individual site visits to our neighborhood, they took the trouble to do that. There were three agenda or working meetings to discuss Howard Nickel, and three meetings, actual formal meetings with public comment and discussion. So there was hours that your Planning Commission that you appointed devoted to this issue. And the final vote that they took reflected many concerns, including a number of technical ones that I'm not going to go into today, and they reached the considered conclusion that Howard Nickel should be downgraded from four lanes to two. I think to summarize where we come from on this, there are three core principles for Fayetteville. And I should mention that although I am not legally a citizen of Fayetteville, I consider myself very much a citizen of Fayetteville. We pay, I sent my son graduated from Fayetteville High School, we pay property taxes for the schools, and I just, as part of my ethos, I consider myself part of Fayetteville, and I hope you will as well. Because of the kinds of principles that Fayetteville holds, neighborhood preservation, safety, distributed traffic flow, and the phrase that you've already heard, which I'll reiterate, the two, two-lane roads are better than one four-lane road. Our neighborhood, you've met our POA president, we have twenty-three families, we've got an active Property Owners Association, we have annual block parties, we get together for Fourth of July, shoot off fireworks with the kids. Not mine, mine are grown, but dozens of children and grandchildren in the area, they're riding bikes, playing in the front yard. Is not designed for an artery through the middle of our neighborhood. I want to go a little bit beyond the line on the map. It's a neighborhood. I'm going to start at the top of our neighborhood. A lot of you have been out there, but a few pictures may help. This is Roy's and Susan's house at the top of the neighborhood. As you're looking at these pictures, try to imagine a four- or five-lane road in front of it, instead of what we currently have. This is Roy getting ready for the grandkids to come over. He's out there with that blow-up thing every weekend, and they do not have a lot of space between them and the road there. Okay? Here's Mike's and Angel's house. Now we're moving down the street. Again, imagine a four- or five-lane artery down there. Okay, that's our Property Owners Association's palace. We haven't yet given him a throne, but that's his house. This is TA's house, TA Walton, he's on the curve there. I want to talk about the curve in a minute, actually, you've already heard talk about the curve. This actually is the curve, heading from the south, this is actually from the south. Imagine high-speed traffic, and it will be high-speed, no matter what speed limit you may post there. It's the purpose of a big artery, it's high-speed. So imagine that high-speed traffic trying to take that curve, even at the low speeds that we have there. And it's posted at twenty-five miles an hour right now. As Ed will tell you, they don't always make the curve. Ed's house is the one with the dark, right up at the end there. He already had someone end up in his front yard right next to the house, didn't make the curve. So just a couple more pictures. Now, this is at the bottom of the neighborhood, that's Rick's and Ashley's house, that's from my sidewalk across the street, and then from his sidewalk, there's my house, and as he pointed out the other day, that's the first likely victim, which is his dog, not mine. He, that dog thinks he owns my property, but he doesn't. And I'm not going to say anything more about that. Okay, now what would the neighborhood look like? Well, this is the cross-section, and you do see that it's got the four lanes as well as the median strip. Now, we've been told, over, and you've heard it again here, that the median strip should actually make us like this road. Fact of the matter is, and this was much discussed in the Planning Commission, by commissioners who pointed out it actually would make things more dangerous. You've got a median strip in front of there, he challenged, he said, how are you going to construct the road there? We've got all these driveways emptying onto there, which I'll show you in a minute, how are you going to get to your driveway? You're going to have to go out and make U-turns into speeding traffic. So this is not an advantage, okay? We keep getting told, oh, a median strip, that's going to, you're going to like it, right? But I don't, and as was pointed out, we don't have such a thoroughfare in this city yet. Please don't make us the guinea pigs. Okay, here's, so that's the cross-section. Let me tie it to the actual houses there. That's, again, my, that's an aerial of my house, and I've drawn in the lines as to where the pavement would go, just on my side of the street, not, I didn't do it on the other side, and where the inside of the sidewalk would go. Okay, so it would take out those trees, there'll be a lot of trees we'll take out, and it would be a very, very different neighborhood. So what would the neighborhood look like? Well, the only other principal arterial parkway or boulevard that is on the map, the only other blue line is crossover. I haven't heard it stated tonight, but I've heard it stated before, analogy with Garland by the university, and, you know, but that's really misleading. Garland ends at Maple, it is not a through street. Okay? The artery's purpose is to get through the neighborhood fast. So imagine crossover through our neighborhood, and that, as the council member said, that's going to be a strip of concrete. So here I am, standing on the sidewalk, just like I was standing on the sidewalk in those previous pictures. So it's the exact same perspective, as if I was looking at my neighbor's house across the street. It's, and this is not the busy part of crossover, this is south of Mission. Okay? Well, this is what you got, you got trucks. We have trucks through our neighborhood, okay? And although this isn't the busiest part, it's, well, it's not very busy, this is what you're looking at. Do you really want to put, and I think the Planning Commission decided they did not want to put a road like this through our neighborhood. So let's have safety. Just last month, Fayetteville issued a press release with regard to crossover, the other analogous road, okay, to step up enforcement, to reduce injuries and crashes. Apparently, there's a significant number of injuries and crashes on crossover. As was mentioned before, the neighborhood was approved in 2003, facing onto the road, rather than backing onto the road, as I believe the guidelines that you have for the city do state should be done, if you're going to have a principal artery. I don't believe there's any other neighborhood in town that was created to face onto a principal artery. So the proposal to switch it back is to make us an experiment. In our opinion, and I think we have a lot to basis opinion on, such an artery would divide and destroy this neighborhood. It was like a neighborhood, beautiful neighborhood built with a ticking time bomb inside of it, which the Planning Commission diffused. I think they corrected a mistake that had been made back in '03. I believe that back in '03, the Planning Commission staff, and in fact, we've been candidly told this, there were serious reservations about the design... candidly told this, there were serious reservations about the design of that neighborhood. They did recommend its approval, but it was with some stipulations that indicate the unease with which they held that development. Yes, there was certainly attraction to have that road connected from Rupel to Howard Nickel because it didn't exist before. But the stipulation was, initial stipulation was, there should only be five curb cuts because this is a major artery, principal artery. The developer said, "Well, what about eight?" Because to do it five, you'd have to have shared driveways, and that's not really appropriate for this neighborhood and so on. So it went to eight. During development, it went to nine. It was an amendment. Today, it's sixteen because of the circular driveways. This is a...and when the lot next to me gets developed, it'll be seventeen or eighteen. This is in gross violation, grossly inconsistent with the guidelines that you have on your books for access management to an artery. I don't see how you're going to do it. Also violates, as has been pointed out, the principle that's been enunciated in City Plan 2030 of distributed traffic flow. The two two-lane roads are better than one four-lane road. Here's the slide in City Plan 2030 that was read here before, the slide 1019. And I won't repeat it, I've just highlighted the passages. And the explanation around it was with regard to the rationale for dispersing traffic within a network rather than funneling it all through a road. Okay? Back in 2003, Fayetteville did commission a traffic study. It's the only one that I know of that you folks commissioned, $250,000. And it called, it recognized that the right-of-way was there, but it said, "You really don't need to use it." The plan for 2023 that was laid out back then was, in fact, I don't know if you can read it up there, but you have it in your packet there. That red line, this was before the curb was put in place, it was still, the idea was to join it as a T. Turns out that T's in the middle of a ravine, so you can't do it anyway. But it says here, "Two lanes in principal arterial parkway." In other words, it says, "Yes, we know the city has the right-of-way, but we don't see the need to use it." The Planning Commission map, the map that is before you for approval, and which we hope you do approve, has a fairly rich grid. It's got a number of...and some of this was mentioned earlier by the council member. We've got Rupel and Salem Road coming up there on the west side. We've got, sorry, Rupel on the west side. We've got Salem one block over. That's the one that's currently being used for the north-south. We've got Dean Solomon, it's actually proposed to go to a four-lane here. There's a number of other dotted lines in there as well, both on the north-south and on the east-west, including east-west for West Salem, cutting across there. So there's really, this seems to actually exactly fit what was described on the previous slide, which is to have a grid for distributed traffic flow, and it would be overkill to make us four lanes too. So let me conclude by, I started off thanking the Planning Commission. I do also want to thank the planning staff, especially Jesse Foltzer, who's the project manager. This planning staff has been very professional, very cooperative. They sat down with our neighborhood for an hour last December, always sending me stuff. So I really don't want anything to be misinterpreted here. Obviously, we have a different view, but it's all been very respectful, and I appreciate the professionalism and courtesy of the staff. And I also want to thank you, the city council, for the time and effort that you have spent on this issue, listening, speaking, and working with us, not only in recent weeks, but over the four years that we have been coming to you on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Jackson. I'm from the Estates at Salem Hills. I'm sorry, I get nervous in front of you. I hate that camera. I want to make a point, but I don't want to get upset about it. Sorry, I don't like it like this.
Well, you just take your time. We have all evening.
Oh, no.
Believe me, we've been here for, we're used to this. Take all the time you need.
As a mom, let me tell you, there are plenty of two-lane roads out there. We can get to in front of those schools just fine with the two-lane grids. There's no reason to put four lanes through our neighborhood.
Thank you.
I'm Roy Slaughter, and I also live in the Salem Hills addition. I live at 3606 Howard Nickel Road. My house happened to be the first one you saw, and yes, I was filling up a slide for my grandchildren who come over every weekend. I do appreciate the time that the staff and the city and all has taken. I've been here for five years when I first heard of this. I've been in the neighborhood for six, and when I first heard of it five years ago, I came to a city council meeting and complained, and I was told at that time that I would have known about the change to that street if I would have attended a meeting that was held at Gully Park. I know most of you know where Gully Park is. You know where my neighborhood is. And with me being outside the city limits, I just caught it by accident that there was even a meeting that had been held at Gully Park. I wasn't there. I also want to thank Jeremy because I think we have challenged the staff, and we have also educated the staff. We asked for other roads in the city that were like this. We were told there were streets in Kansas City like this. We were told there were streets in Tulsa like this. I appreciate that they finally found some in Portland, Sacramento, and Little Rock. I would also challenge Ms. Lewis, and I appreciate the challenge. I'm not sure, I build a lot of plants and a lot of parking lots, and just from the pictures I saw, I'm not sure any of those would have fit in a ninety-foot area. I would challenge the staff to get the measurements of those streets and see if that would happen. But I do thank you for your time. I thank the council members, and I thank the Street Planning Commission for their time who come and visit our neighborhood. We appreciate it. We enjoy being part of Fayetteville, outside of Fayetteville. We're still in the country, but we're probably as close to the city as you can get to still be in the country. And we love that neighborhood, and we love the safety that's there, and that's the reason I'm here. You know, the trucks and all that you see there in the four-lane? Today, I can sit there on a Sunday afternoon, and I can probably count twenty or thirty bikes that go across while I'm sitting in my hammock out there under those shade trees, which were just the other side of that slide. I can tell you, I probably count ten or twelve cars. Cars do not come through our neighborhood today. They make the turn at the stop below our neighborhood. They do not come there today. You put four-lane through there, you've destroyed our neighborhood. And we'd appreciate your kindness and appreciation for everything y'all have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My name is Bob Wasslech, and I live at 2909 Howard Nickel Road. And basically, we're about, our family's about a quarter mile from 112 and along Howard Nickel Road. And there's one thing that I'm seeing with our particular stretch. It's a very significant elevation from 112 to about a half a mile up Howard Nickel Road. I haven't really heard this tonight, but you combine a boulevard scenario, four lanes, cars that are, I mean, driveways that are, you know, a couple hundred feet apart trying to get onto that, doing turnarounds in there. I think that that's a very significant hazard, and that's going to be a very big concern of our family. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Sharp. I live in Ward One. I know these, we're talking about City Plan 2030, which is supposed to be the plan for the whole city, and we've heard a lot from neighbors about one particular neighborhood. But I have a concern about the four-lane road in that location because I think it's not good policy for the city to draw lines on the map and commit resources on the edge of town to encourage sprawl, to encourage people to settle even further and further out. I think that we ought to spend our resources on the core of the town rather than on the edges. I think that for handling traffic, what we did at Lafayette is a great example, where it used to be wider and actually got narrower and got better, and the traffic flow is just fine. I think that two-lane roads in general are naturally self-regulating. People know that you can't run a bunch of cars down a two-lane road, and so they learn to set their alarm clock five minutes earlier so they can leave earlier for work, or they learn to plan their trips, particularly if they have that grid situation where they can make choices. So I think this is not just a neighborhood issue, but it's a city issue. I think if we looked at the infrastructure we have on the ground and looked at the resources we have over the next twenty or forty years, I'd be surprised if we could actually already pay for the maintenance of what we already have in place. I know a lot of the water lines and sewer lines in the core of the town are inadequate. And so I would, I think that we should not be spending money or planning for roads that clearly aren't wanted by the neighbors in that place. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
Hi, my name is Peter Unger. I'm at 2885 Howard Nickel Road. I'm part of that, I'm not part of the neighborhood, but I'm part of that, the stretch between 112 and where the neighborhood begins. One thing that I haven't heard discussed, and I don't know whether there's any understanding of the plans, is what's happening north of Howard Nickel Road. On the north side of the road, along my stretch, we spoke to the realtor who was selling that big parcel of land, and the intent is to have more neighborhoods. The intent, from what I understand, is that there'll be more housing up and along Howard Nickel Road. And I'm concerned about the safety, but I'm also concerned that everybody take into account what the intent is for that section of Howard Nickel Road, where there's currently nothing, but undoubtedly there will be more housing.
Thank you. Jeremy, do you have any idea on that? Come on up.
Sam, Scarlett Stevens. I live at 3618 West Howard Nickel Road. I know several of you, you've come to the neighborhood and visited. I've been going to the street committee for several years. We've been to the Planning Commission. And both of those committees basically agreed with us that we didn't need a four-lane road through our street. The street that Jeremy showed you, I live five minutes from that one in Little Rock. That goes to the country club and golf course on one side and dead ends at 430 on the other side. There is no traffic on that four-lane divided street because that's residential with large houses. The other, as Ms. Adams pointed out, they were using as parking for part of it, so those weren't real good uses. We wouldn't want something like that to happen to our neighborhood. I do live in the house that's in the curve where a person missed the street and lost control of his vehicle and came within, closer from me to you from hitting my house. And that's with a 25 mile an hour speed limit. So when we up it to 35 or 45, it's going to make it dangerous for us that live in the curve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Name's Ron Eaton, and I live at 2845 Howard Nickel Road. I live about a quarter mile up the road from 112. I'm not in the neighborhood, but I did grow up too in my teenage years in Little Rock and lived on Arkansas Valley Drive, which is connected to Pleasant Valley Drive. And I can tell you, as a teenager driving in Little Rock, they do drive fast on that road. And with the trees and the grass, it's kind of hard to see cars coming. So as you're trying to pull out and pull left, it's going to be kind of hard to see. Even though the trees would be nice, it'd be kind of hard to see cars flying up over the hills. So I would recommend if you would consider just leaving it as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Hello, my name is Diane Searnsen-Ongar. I live at 2885 Howard Nickel Road. Also not part of the upper end of Howard Nickel neighborhood, but the lower end, about a quarter mile from 112. And we moved out there in '96. We purposely moved out there because it was the outer edge of Fayetteville away from the city part. We wanted to be more, we wanted to be in, fit close to Fayetteville, but not in any sprawling area out in where there's nature and beauty. And right now, we still have plenty of deer and owl and bunny rabbits, and we really enjoy the beautiful part of it and that we're on the outskirts. And that's how we want to keep it in the outskirts and not part of a sprawling city. And we also have two children who go to the local schools. They went to Holcombe and Holt, and now Raimy. And I enjoy it as a, I think of Fayetteville as a family-friendly, safe nature area where our kids could still walk up the street and ride their bikes, but enjoy the beauty of the nature. And that is also going to be, the nature's going to be affected as well as our ability to enjoy our part of 112 if that changes into a more sprawling, busy area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Come on in.
Mayor and council, first of all, while I've been identified as a member of the Planning Commission, I'm here not to talk about Howard Nickel, and I'm here to talk about an issue that I raised at the Planning Commission meeting and did not get a second on. So this is more a citizen perspective of an issue. Let me just also pick two words from those great words up there, trendsetter and wonderful. And what this city is doing in the planning process and establishing objectives and specific timeframes to address each one of those issues is wonderful, and I think we are truly a trendsetter in that area. Now, to what I want to talk about. First and foremost, planning is important. We all know that. We're a large public corporation, and we're no exception to that. We've spent incredible amounts of time and money in developing and administrating plans that have been very well done, and we have established objectives within each of those objectives or goals to use as benchmarks to measure progress. The first three that I'm going to talk about that I want to refer back to are, we will make appropriate infill and revitalization our highest priorities. We will discourage urban sprawl, and we will make traditional town form the standard. There's three more. Those are the three I want to focus on. All of these seem to deal with discouraging a certain type of development and seem to focus city policy on a certain course of action. The point that I want to make is simple and direct, and it's relevant at least to me. The plan before you shows a number of arterials in our planning area in the northeast quadrant, outside of the city. Purely and simply, placing an extensive grid of streets in our planning area seems to fly in the face of goals one, two, and three. They're at counter purposes, at least from my perspective. The staff has made an excellent point, and that the city, if the area develops at some point in the future, needs to have some assurance that the streets will be built to adequate standards. While that is obviously true on its face, what the city says in goals one, two, and three is that we would prefer the development to occur within present boundaries. We have proposed action steps in the plan to encourage the developer to focus the development in the established portions in this wonderful city. In addition, any development of any size in our planning area will require city utilities. And even if there are no lines on a map, and we've talked about lines on a map tonight, if there's no lines on a map depicting a road network, it would be very easy, working with the county as part of their negotiation for utilities, to mandate whatever road configuration would be appropriate and necessary for that development. In closing, I said planning is important. Several people have said lines on a map are important. We just finished a debate on Howard Nickel on that. The city showing a map that suggests approval of a road network that would do nothing but encourage sprawl is simply not on point with what I think we are trying to do.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Flint Harris. I live at 3597 West Howard Nickel Road. So I'd like to come y'all and talk to y'all about a couple of issues in our neighborhood. I think one is safety that we've talked about. I laughed because when the blow-up waterslide thing came down, I thought of my two-year-old daughter who, every time we drive by, wants to go over there and play. So the other night, we walked over there and played. I can't imagine having to get in my car and cross a five-lane road to go to my neighbor's house and play. That just seems ludicrous to me. Also, I understand that this isn't an ideal situation. It's not an ideal situation for y'all. It's not an ideal situation for us. But know that not one of us benefited monetarily when that development was made. Not one of our homeowners made that development. That was Tomlinson, and he doesn't live in our development. And so we had no benefit from that. Okay? It's there now. We're there. We pay our taxes. We feel like we're good people. If you want to support Fayetteville, you've got to support the neighborhoods. If you're going to go in there and destroy a neighborhood so that we can become like Portland, Oregon, or Sacramento, California, or somewhere else that's 2,000 miles away from Fayetteville, by God, Arkansas, that doesn't make any sense to me. Now, I charge y'all, and we will be glad to help. Let's find a solution to this problem that helps Fayetteville that doesn't destroy our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Sir, could I ask you, when did you build your house?
'05.
Okay. Now, when you looked at your plot of land, you bought the land and built the house?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Did you see the right-of-way?
Did we see that?
Was there a right-of-way there?
I'm not sure if there was or not. I, I don't know. I wasn't savvy at building. I knew that I found a nice place of land that I wanted to raise my family on. We found it. Never dreamed in a million years that we'd be trying to put a five-lane road through a neighborhood that's that far off five-forty and, and one-twelve. So, did I look and know if the right-of-way was there? No, I did not. Did I ever think in a million years that I needed to worry about college coming through the middle of a neighborhood in Fayetteville, Arkansas? No, I didn't think about that either.
And your builder or your, the person who sold you the land didn't say anything about it?
I mean, it's been six years ago. I don't remember a big discussion about right-of-way at that time. I know that Gerald Tomlinson developed it to make a lot of money, and he didn't really care about us. He cared about making money for himself, and he did that. But he didn't take care of our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Who else?
My name's Jeff Montgomery. I live, I'm the fourth house down from one-twelve as you enter West Howard Nichols. I guess we worked from the front end where the new subdivision is about four or five years ago. I'm at the back end. I did do my homework in two thousand and two. I did know there's a possibility that road could be built, but I knew there's also a lot of other possibilities. When I first bought my first house and I bought my second house, I knew it's gonna be a lifelong investment. And I intend on staying put where I'm at right now. I, I would lose fifty trees in my yard if this is expanded. We have over four hundred trees in our yard, and I'll probably plant another seventy-five to a hundred. Over twenty thousand dollars worth of landscaping and still going. I've gone by probably three or four times a year to see what's gonna happen in the last seven years, just to stay updated. I would not have known about this meeting tonight unless one of my neighbors put a flyer in my mailbox. So that's how I knew about it. I think we've gotta look at the overall picture. We do need an east-west route. But if you look at it, the whole purpose of this whole thing is to go from the mall, Van Ash, down to the west side of town and down towards Farmington. The farm are pretty much in the middle. I know you guys know, it's probably gonna hold out, and that may not ever happen. So what's gonna happen, we're gonna have a bunch of dead-end streets that go nowhere. So what we may have to do is have two, two two-lane roads. What I would propose, basically, is somebody take a close look at it, and I'm sure it's been done, as you come down one-twelve to the second curb to the new subdivision that's going up, you can turn left on, I believe it's Dean Solomon, that goes by the Razorback Golf Course. Back there, there's a dirt road. A lot of that land is owned by, I think, the school system, not being used whatsoever. I would propose that you look at paving that road going south of the subdivision, and then you've got two ways going west. Not as many people are hurt by that. It directs more traffic flow, and that might be a possibility to look at. I'd like for you to take a look at that.
Thank you. Who else? Come up, Jim.
Well, I didn't even know this was gonna be talked about tonight. And I live in Clabber Creek, right there on Rupel, we're at dead ends. Gosh, I wouldn't wanna take on people who have houses that are worth seven figures. That's gonna be a big, long legal problem. I agree with everything that's been said here, and I'd like to add two things. One is, there needs to be disclosure. When builder, my, my neighborhood, Clabber Creek Four, has covenants, well, I bet you I'm the only one there who knows they have covenants, 'cause I demanded to see the covenants before I moved in there. Okay, that's part of disclosure. I think the city needs to pass a law where builders have to make disclosures of significant events that may affect the value of their property. This is done in a lot of cities. And, and it's a good way to cover the city's bases, too. Second issue, Rhonda, thanks for being a southerner with your southern voice. When I saw that Portland street, I just about waved out. There's something going on in this town, and you can, I'm starting to see it on the west side, I'm starting to see it in these meetings. You've got a Yankee in this group somewhere. So, you're starting to build houses that are squeezed in and go up this way, and I can't live in those 'cause my legs are all messed up. And parking on the side of a road, I've seen that up in Connecticut. I unfortunately lived up there for about a total of five months, and then I came back south. You're starting to turn, if, if you start adopting things like those roads that you can park on at certain hours, you know, it's just gonna, it's not gonna be the South anymore. And that's the thing that we need to protect the most. I remember growing up, and most lots were about an acre in Georgia. I can't stand that I'm living on a one-hundred-by-one-hundred lot. So, there's some culture to be preserved here, and I think your attorney can set up some rules that'll help avoid this situation in the future. In all fairness, I think you, you need to rewrite this thing, 'cause not everybody knows it, and I think it's just gonna cause a, a bunch of east-west problems.
Thank you, Jim. Who else?
My name is Mike Sten, and I'm at three-three-zero-seven West Howard Nickel. I've only lived there for about, oh, nine months now, eight months, and I, I think the biggest thing for me is the, the safety of our children. We, we moved to this area, I did not do my homework, I did not know about the, the right-of-ways or the easements. I didn't look. I just saw a great area to move to. Of course, we only moved about a mile away, but I know that these guys live down the road from me. They probably wanna throw rocks at me when I'm running in the morning, and, but there is a big safety issue, I think, with, you know, when we talk about speed through the neighborhood. At six-thirty in the morning, I don't know if people are late going to work or what have you, but there is a major speed issue through that area. And, and having two children that, that, and trying to, it's at eight, eight and eleven years old, that, that coming up and down Howard Nickel Road is, it's already extremely, extremely fast. I don't believe it's overly busy. But I, I do, I, I would highly recommend and would suggest, as my part, to, to relook at, at another route coming through that area. So.
Thank you. Who else? Saying that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to offer my amendment regarding alleyways at this time before we continue discussing on Howard Nickel.
Can I ask it to one person if we come back to the microphone?
Could we do that first?
Do we do that first, Matthew? I'm sorry.
You don't have to.
I, I wanted to ask Peter to come back to the microphone, Peter, if that's okay?
Yeah.
You were the one, I think, who talked a little bit about living outside of the, of the subdivision, but you mentioned, okay, let's see, let me back up here. A lot of people are talking about today and how there's not a traffic problem now. And when I met with Jeremy and Jesse, we talked a lot about future, the, we're planning for the future. So Peter, when you were talking tonight, you were talking about the future of the area around you that is outside of Howard Nickel Road. And I'm not sure I understood you clearly. Are you concerned about the, the subdivisions that will come in causing traffic problems in your neighborhood?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Or do you believe the road is at, I mean, just from your point of view? I'm, I know you're not a city planner, but from your point of view, could you just say again what you were talking about, the subdivisions that you've heard are gonna be around your area?
Sure. Thank you, Rhonda. I, I'm not anticipating, you know, very tightly packed houses or, or a huge population density. My concern is that this, Howard Nickel, the lower part of Howard Nickel will also become a neighborhood, in the sense that right now, it's nothing but open fields, at least adjacent and across from my house. But from our discussions with the Realtor, the intent is for that to also become those fifty or sixty acres, I'm not entirely certain how many, to, to also become neighborhoods. And, and I'm concerned about the safety for, for the families that will live there as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, Mayor.
I'd like to move that we make this amendment to alleyways, request a second.
Second. Motion, a second to add to alleyways to this master street plan. What discussion do we have on that?
I'd just like to say that, you know, whenever this came to the street committee, this is one of the few things that caught my eye and that, that raised a red flag for me with the master street plan. And specifically, it was a requirement for a twenty-foot setback off the rear side of these alleys. And the reason that was a cause for concern for me is, is I imagine some of these developments that we're going to be seeing, that Fayetteville's going to be seeing over the next decade, it made me wonder how many lots would we lose in each of those developments if we had a twenty-foot setback on, on each of the lots that were approved. I'm happy to say that working with staff, with solid base in the planning, and we were able to come to a significant reduction into that, and I think that's important. You know, this may seem like it's kind of a minor change, but with a planning document like this, anything that's in here is, it's a policy statement that the city is making. We need to be, when we're being future-minded, we need to realize that there are hard costs involved with the density of neighborhoods. I know that's been a dirty word tonight, but there are hard costs involved related to the density of neighborhoods. How many houses, how many families can be served off of one water line or one street is an important consideration, and those costs are only going up. And so that's why I thought this was important to consider. And I think that's relevant to some of the other discussions we had tonight, specifically to alleys. That was what concerned me, and I'm happy that we were all able to come to an agreement.
Any other discussion on this?
So just to be clear, right now, it says twenty feet, and you're proposing ten.
It says twenty feet off the right-of-way now. This is ten feet off the edge of the pavement, which may not be up to the right-of-way, so it's actually a larger reduction than it may seem at first glance. And there's also additional language, and that there may be alternative means of handling the required amount of parking that could also have an effect on, on how the neighborhood is designed.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Is, I guess there's in public comment on this amendment. So, saying that, I'll bring it back to the council. I guess first we'll vote on the amendment. All right. Sundance, please call the room.
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Okay, I guess the next order of business would be the revised master street plan, which would include recognitions from the planning commission. Is that correct? Okay.
First off, let me say that I'm not decided either way on this yet. I'm trying to keep an open mind, and I would encourage the rest of the council members to do the same, because I don't think that we've heard all the discussion we need to. I'm gonna say some things, but I would ask that we don't make a decision on this tonight, both because I think there's some other things to consider, but also out of deference to Alderman Farrell, who isn't here tonight. He's chairman of the street committee, and I think he should be present for a vote on this.
So are you making a motion to table?
Well, I will at the end of my comment.
Okay.
I wanna just take a moment to address some of the things that we've heard said. First off, you know, the examples that are used, and the fact that we don't see any of those in Fayetteville, that's absolutely true. And that's because none of these ideas have been present in Fayetteville planning until the last decade, until the last five or six years, really, starting right about the year or two after this plat was approved. That's unfortunate from a timeline, but that's why we don't see those projects developed yet. We have examples of those on the books and in the plans and that we've budgeted for but haven't designed yet. And I think that, based on some of the decisions that the street committee has made, and some of the very lengthy discussions and significant public input we've had on projects such as Crossover or Garland, that it's clear that the city is committed to evaluating other options besides a conventional four-lane or, or four-lane plus a continuous turning lane, street design that we're all used to. Even when the highway department is concerned, we've seen that with Garland. When the city council, the street committee, and the mayor come together, we have the ability to influence the highway department when it comes to streets within our community. And we can have designs that don't represent the convention. You know, we heard that, one of the main things we heard is just how are we going to construct this with so many access points? And at the same time, we heard that Garland or Crossover or College don't compare. Well, if they don't compare, then I have a question, because Garland has about three times as many, maybe four times as many, access points on that road that we designed for. And the same is true for Crossover, and the same is true for College, which was developed over the past thirty or forty years. If you look at College and you look at all the access issues there, it's not perfect, but people manage it. It's definitely possible to handle twelve or eighteen or twenty access points in this neighborhood with a context-sensitive design, which are included in the, in the, in this updated master street plan. We heard, please don't make us the guinea pigs. Well, we don't want to make anyone the guinea pigs on this. If anybody's gonna be the guinea pigs, it's Crossover, which has already been designed and construction's beginning, and Garland, which design is nearing completion. You know, I think that the main thing we need to do is realize what decision we're actually being asked to make. I feel like with all the public comments tonight, I'm being asked to make a decision that isn't actually before us, which is whether or not to build a four-lane road around this stretch. That's not the decision before us. The decision before us is whether or not to plan for whether or not that capacity will ever be needed, and that is a much different decision. And I sit on the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, which looks at streets all over the four county area. And it's just recently that we voted on the twenty-thirty-five transportation plan. That's twenty-five years out. For those of you that live near one-twelve, you should know that in that plan, they accounted for the potential need to widen one-twelve, and that will affect your neighborhood as well. However, a decision was not made to widen the street, to widen Highway one-twelve. A decision was just made to plan for it. So that, if that need ever was there, and if the decision to actually do it was ever made, that we would already have some of the groundwork in place and wouldn't be caught in a situation that was harder to overcome than if we, than if we did plan for it. And that's the same thing with this document. We're being asked to make plans for potential needs twenty years out. And right now, there's no need at all for a four-lane. That would be obscene, to put a four-lane road there right now. It would be absolutely obscene. And we know, and everyone agrees, that two two-lane roads will always be better. But what if, what if in twenty years or thirty years, when there are fifty to seventy thousand more people living in Fayetteville? Fifty to seventy thousand more people living in Fayetteville? Let's not be ignorant of that fact. What if, with that population growth, two two-lanes doesn't work anymore? What if it won't work anymore? And if that is the case, and we haven't made any plans for a four-lane at all, then we're gonna be responsible for that. And that's gonna cost the city more than we can imagine at this point. We've already invested four million in completed projects. There's thirteen million budgeted, and that's the city's money. There's four million in developer contributions, and that's not counting right-of-way dedication. So we can throw a couple million of that away and rebudget all the rest of what hasn't been spent yet. That's true. But if we don't have a plan for a four-lane out there, and we need a four-lane twenty-five years down the line, then we saddle that decision on somebody who, you know, who hasn't been equipped with the resources to deal with it. And that's our job now, is to equip that future council with the resources to handle that decision. It's not our job to say, let's build a four-lane. It's just our job to say, let's make sure we can handle it if we need to. I take that responsibility very seriously. You know, and I, I am being honest when I say I'm not decided on, on this at all. I criticized the mayor's VOX plan whenever he ran for office. And I did that publicly. But I am a fan of planning. And when I campaigned, I made a point of explaining what I thought my responsibility was, and that was to perform due diligence for the future of Fayetteville. And I think that's what this issue is about, is about doing due diligence on this decision. So again, I, I would move that we, there's no amendment here, so I would move that we table the master street plan as a whole tonight and hold off on making this decision. I'm curious what everybody else has to say, but out of deference to Alderman Farrell, who's chair of the street committee, I think he should be present for the vote.
I'll second that.
What discussion do we have? You just wanna, okay, I think we're done for this evening on this, aren't we? Okay. We have a motion, a second to table for two weeks.
Two weeks.
Sundance, would you please call the room?
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Y'all wanna break, you wanna keep going?
Oh, let's keep going.
Okay. All right. Next thing we have is number six, rezoning 11-3804 Northwest Corner of Mountain Street and College Avenue, East Square Development. North is revoking CPZD 05-1610, East Square Development, and rezoning the property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3804 for approximately 1.01 acres located at Northwest Corner of Mountain Street and College Avenue from CPZD Commercial Plan Zoning District 05-1610 to DC Downtown Core. Get ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that CPZD 5-1610, East Square Development, is hereby revoked because the developer failed to obtain development permits in accordance with the approved phase development schedule. Section 2, that the zone classification following described properties hereby changed as follows, from CPZD Commercial Plan Zoning District 5-1610 to Downtown Core, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section 3, the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby amended to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1 above. Okay. Jeremy? Actually, that should read, "Section 2 above." Sorry. Thank you, Kent.
This item and the next three items, so four in total, all represent PZDs that were approved over the past probably three to four or five years that have not occurred, that they've all expired in one form or fashion, and have not obtained their building permits or their required approvals within the phase schedule that they presented as part of the PZD. So we're gonna present each one of these separately, but I just wanna let everyone know what these projects are for. These are not applicants presenting applications to you for rezoning. This is staff bringing forward in accordance, these rezonings in accordance with our revocation process of our PZD ordinance. This first one is formerly known, East Square Development. The project is owned CPZD, which is a commercial plan zoning district. It's one acre within the downtown master plan area and the blocks between the center and Mountain Street adjacent to College Avenue. This project was approved back in 2005 to include an 18-story structure, to include hotel condominiums, retail tenant space, conference rooms, restaurant bar, and a seven-story parking garage. There were extensions granted to this planned zoning district, and it finally expired in December of 2010, last year, and no permits were obtained by that time in order to allow the project to go forward. We began this process, we have about 16 of these planned zoning districts that have expired in the last six months or so, and we're beginning with the ones we feel like make relative, are relatively easy in terms of their rezoning, the merit to rezone the projects to what we're recommending. We did send an initial letter to property owners in October, notified them of the process and to contact us with any recommendations that they might have for rezoning the property. We met with a number of them, and in April, we actually sent an official PZD revocation notice by certified mail. We are recommending this project be zoned Downtown Core, which would reflect the zoning that's surrounding this property. It is, it was a zoning district that was created with our downtown master plan. It's the most intense zoning district, and that area of the downtown was identified as the most intense, intensely developed area, or potential for intense development. The planning commission also saw this item, and they recommended unanimously in favor of this zoning for Downtown Core, and staff is recommending approval of that ordinance.
Comments, questions for Jeremy on this?
I'm moving that we approve it.
Second.
Let me get some public comment. I think this is, this is an ordinance, so we're gonna have to go through.
Okay, I'm moving that we go to the first and second reading.
Second.
Okay, can I get some public comment first? Who's, let's get a little tired. What public comment do we have on this?
Not gonna move it.
I think we've already established. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fiedra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
An ordinance revoking CPZD 5-1610, East Square Development, and rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3804 for approximately an acre located at the Northwest Corner of Mountain Street and College Avenue from CPZ 05-1610 to Downtown Core.
Okay, I entertain a motion to go to the third.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fiedra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, thank you all. Number seven, RZN 11-3805, east of Dead Horse Mountain Road, Falling Waters. An ordinance revoking RPZD 05-1635, Falling Waters, and rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3805 for approximately 136.70 acres located east of Dead Horse Mountain Road from RPZD Residential Plan Zoning District 05-1635 to RA Residential Agricultural. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that RPZD 05-1635, Falling Waters, is hereby revoked because the developer failed to obtain development permits in accordance with the approved phase development schedule. Section 2, that the zone classification of following described properties hereby changed as follows, from RPZD 05-1635 to Residential Agricultural, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section 3, the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, is hereby amended to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 2 above. Okay, Chairman?
This is another PZD revocation. This project is located south of Stonebridge Meadows Golf Course off of Dead Horse Mountain Road, contains approximately 137 acres, pretty significant topography changes. It is undeveloped at this time and heavily treed. This project was, again, approved in 2005 as Falling Waters, a residential plan zoning district. It was originally zoned RA, Residential Agricultural, and the proposal called for 258 single-family lots with a density of approximately two units per acre. In this particular case, staff felt the original zoning was the most appropriate zone to go back to. We did not have a zoning district that really approached what this project intended, especially given the fact that they had limited a lot of tree removal canopy, there were hillside, there are hillside, hilltop, overlay district issues within this property. So we did recommend to go back to the original residential agricultural use, which will be, again, low-density. If there is a proposal in the future, obviously, a new property owner can always submit that to our office for review and to the city council for consideration. The planning commission also recommended this approval with a vote of eight to zero.
What questions do we have for Chairman on this? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. What's the wishes of the council?
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
I think it's a great idea. We have a motion and a second. Well done.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fiedra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
An ordinance revoking RPZD 05-1635, Falling Waters, and rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3805 for approximately 137 acres located east of Dead House Mountain Road from Residential Plan Zoning District 05-1635 to RA Residential Agricultural.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second. All right, we're on a roll then. All right. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fiedra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
An ordinance revoking RPZD 05-1635, Falling Waters, and rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3805 for approximately 137 acres located east of Dead Horse Mountain Road from Residential Plan Zoning District 05-1635 to RA Residential Agricultural.
Any final comments from the council on this? Y'all good with that? Okay. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fiedra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
An ordinance revoking RPZD 06-2190, Woodbury, rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3806 for approximately 9.26 acres located south of Zion Road and east of Towson Lane from RPZD Residential Plan Zoning District 06-2190 to NC Neighborhood Conservation.
Okay?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the prop, that a portion of the property, as described herein, zoned RPZD 6-2190, Woodbury, is hereby revoked because the developer failed to obtain development permits in accordance with the approved phase development schedule. Section 2, that the zone classification of following described property is hereby changed as follows, from Residential Plan Zoning District 6-2190 to Neighborhood Conservation, as shown on Exhibit A attached here to and made a part hereof. Section 3, that the property identified in Exhibit B attached here to shall remain in its zoning designation of RPZD 6-2190, Woodbury, with all the remaining zoning and development rights and regulations prescribed therein. Section 4, the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby amended to reflect the zoning change provided in Sections 2 and 3 above.
Chairman?
This project is located, it's 11.66 acres located in the south side of Zion Road, across from the Lakewood neighborhood, which is west of Fayetteville Athletic Club. The property was zoned, originally zoned RA, Residential Agricultural, and was approved in 2006 for a residential plan zoning district. It consisted of three planning areas, 67 single-family units, 45 multifamily units, and then a common area with a clubhouse, pool, and green space. The applicant proposed to do something unique here in that they did not plat lots. They'd built it all on one property and then sold each single-family cottage as a condominium. In this particular case, 16 of the single-family dwellings were constructed, some of which are occupied, as well as the pool and clubhouse. However, the phase schedule that the developer submitted did not continue after that, and since that time, the rest of the property has been turned over to a bank. In this particular case, we decided to, in the best interest of the 16 homes in the clubhouse, to retain those PZD rights in perpetuity unless someone asks for a rezoning, but for the remaining portion of the property, which is about 9.2 acres, to rezone those to Neighborhood Conservation. Neighborhood Conservation is a zone that allows primarily single-family dwelling units. You may remember that was created also in our downtown master plan and was used extensively in the Walker Park Neighborhood Plan, when we redid the rezoning efforts there. There were a lot of multifamily properties zoned in the Walker Park area, and we then, we subsequently changed those to Neighborhood Conservation. So we felt that was a good fit as a transition here. You have multifamily apartment complexes to the east, higher density single-family to the north, lower density to the west, and we felt Neighborhood Conservation as a medium-density single-family type, two-family zoning would work well here. We are recommending approval, as did the planning commission, with a vote of six to two. One of the commissioners indicated that they would prefer the property revert back to the RA zoning district. There is a lot of infrastructure already in place within this particular subdivision, within this particular neighborhood, and so we didn't feel like RA would be a good use of this property. It feels like a developed property, part of a neighborhood, not something to return back to an agricultural-type use. So we are recommending approval of this ordinance.
Okay. What questions do we have, council? Okay. What public comment do we have on this issue?
Aubrey? Mayor, if we could ask if we could be shown the map, aerial photo for this area. This, I'm uncertain what this is, and I think many people in the public would be, if they hadn't known this was ahead of time and studied it. You guys had a lot of homework for this. I don't think they did it all. Can we ask staff about that?
Would you like to hold?
Yeah. It would be my request that we hold off on this for that point, along with some other reservations, and the fact that Alderman Farrell's not here. I know he's got some questions and concerns about it as well. So I would ask that we, that we hold this from vote tonight, yeah.
You wanna go to the second reading? You just wanna hold it right here?
We've made the second reading, and then leave it there.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
If I may, Mayor?
Sure.
The rest of my comment was simply that we do need to look at the geography and watershed issues on some of these. I know out in that same general area, there's a beautiful piece of prairie there that may be developed, but it doesn't have the infrastructure in, I don't think. But it is in Kitty Creek watershed, which has been a big concern to a lot of people over the years. Thank you.
I agree, Aubrey. Thanks, Aubrey.
And, Jeremy, are you able, I have, I have Google Earth up here, but are you able to show it?
I've given you your presentation earlier, so I can do that.
Okay.
Maybe bring it here next to me.
We need some maps and stuff. We'll, we'll make sure everybody's familiar with the area.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comment on this? Did we have a motion and a second?
I made a motion to move to the second reading tonight.
We have a motion and a second, go to the second reading, then we'll hold it right there. All right. Now, any other discussion? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Tannett?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fiedra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
An ordinance revoking RPZD 6-2190, Woodbury, rezoning that property described in a rezoning petition RZN 11-3806 for approximately nine and a quarter acres located south of Zion Road and east of Towson Lane from RPZD 6-2190 to Neighborhood Conservation.
Okay.
This is a comment to those in the public, if you don't, if you'd like to see the maps for the next council meeting, they are available within the agenda packet that's online on our website. So if you just go to the website and click on those, and the maps that you see here that you all have in front of you and that we have, they're all on the website. So you're welcome to access that.
I'm looking for a topography sort of thing, though.
It's probably not in your exhibits, but we can certainly provide that.
I think that's what Aubrey was referring to, something that actually shows.
We'll get it for you.
Well, I said topography, I meant, what do I mean?
Yeah, that's what's in there.
Terrain and the vegetation and everything.
We get it.
Good idea.
Okay, let's move on to number nine. RZN 11-3807, Southwest Corner of Razorback Road, 15th Street, Champion Club Condos. An ordinance revoking RPZD 07-2551, Champion Club Condos, and rezon that property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3807 for approximately 4.42 acres located at the southwest corner of Razorback Road and 15th Street, east of the Crown Parks, from RPZD Residential Plan Zoning District 07-2551 to UT Urban Thoroughfare. Okay?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that RPZD 7-2551, Champions Club Condos, is hereby revoked because the developer failed to obtain development permits in accordance with the approved phase development schedule. Section 2, that the zone classification of following described properties hereby changed as follows, from RPZD 7-2551 to Urban Thoroughfare, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section 3, the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, is hereby amended to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 2 above.
Okay. Chairman?
This property is located south of 15th Street, west of Razorback Road, right there in the corner, across from Baum Stadium. It used to be zoned I1, heavy commercial and light industrial. The planned zoning district that was approved first in 2006 and then again in 2007 for a slightly different project permitted a total of 143 multifamily dwellings with a higher density of approximately 32 units per acre. As with the others, this project did not move forward. It's currently utilized for extra parking during game day events, and we are recommending it be rezoned to UT Urban Thoroughfare. In this particular case, we are at the center of two arterial streets, Razorback Road and 15th Street, both of which are, I believe, principal arterials in our master street plan. There is funding available for a signal at that location when it is warranted, and it's a high-traffic area, a major entrance into the city of Fayetteville from the south.
Comments, questions from the council? You all, from Ward Four, what you thoughts?
Okay.
All.
So, I think what we'd like to do is share this with at Ward Four meeting, if that's okay. There's, that's kind of what we had discussed.
Do you want to go to the second reading and then just hold it to me? Will that be all right? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any public comment on this one? Come on up, Aubrey.
I'm sorry, this is part of my neighborhood I've watched develop over seventeen years or more, and was slightly familiar with it way back, forty years ago. Anyway, the, as he said, it's overflow parking for all sorts of ballgames and things on the grass, and it's, should be part of the green infrastructure plan, knowing that's not possible in that spot because it is so much in demand. I would just say that in, I'm glad the condos plan would be removed, but there's a little stream runs from the Razorback baseball field detention pond under the street and down to the west arm of the town branch that comes from way out to the west, Walmart on Sixth Martin Luther King, and down the freeway, all the way from the top of the mountain as you head toward Springdale, and also a lot of land in between. Anyway, that little stream probably doesn't qualify as having a hundred-acre watershed at that point. In fact, when condos or the other development on the other side was approved, and when these condos were approved, I believe somebody in the engineering said that, well, they didn't count that, they said that wasn't a string, it was a ditch. But like many of the straightened portions of our tributaries of the town branch of the White, West Fork of the White River in South Fayetteville, the streams have been straightened into ditches many years ago in many cases. If you go down fifteenth street, you see coming down from Walker Park and all the areas across there, the streams in most cases have been straightened years ago, that last quarter mile, or maybe it's a hundred yards in some cases, so they line up where they want to build the bridge and it's most convenient. But they've been naturalized back to being, having a legitimate riparian zone, and they're important to wildlife and all those other things. So, I'm hoping that with each of these, closing out of these old dead plans, that we make sure that we do the maximum, and I think a lot of people in the staff now are dedicated to that, to protect the watershed and protect those wildlife values and everything that a riparian zone and wetland can make a difference in. So, I'm not against the change, but I think it'll probably be a parking area for a while longer.
Thank you, Aubrey. Who else? Bring it back to the council, you all want to go to the second reading?
That's my table.
We have a motion, second, go to the second reading, right? Okay.
Did someone make a motion?
I've got Lewis and Adams.
We got it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's right.
Any other comments on this, Aubrey? We'll be holding on to the second reading. Summer, would you please call the role?
Tenet?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budra?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
An ordinance revoking RPZD seven dash twenty-five fifty-one Champions Club condos and rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-eight oh seven for approximately four point four-two acres located at southwest corner of Razorback Road and fifteenth street, east of the Crown Apartments, from RPZD oh seven dash twenty-five fifty-one to Urban Thoroughfare.
Okay, we'll hold it on the second reading. All right, moving along to number ten, RZN eleven dash thirty-eight thirty-five thirty-seven ten, West Martin Luther King Boulevard, Zaiifi, and ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-eight thirty-five for approximately one point two oh acres located at thirty-seven ten, West Martin Luther King Boulevard, from C-one neighborhood commercial to CS community services. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the zone classification of following described properties hereby changed as follows, from neighborhood commercial to community services, as shown on exhibit A and B attached here to and made apart hereof. In section two, the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville is hereby amended reflects a zoning change provided in section one above.
Jeremy?
This is a property located out on West Martin Luther King Boulevard, west of Old Farmington Road. It's currently developed for a single-family dwelling, and there's a creek on the backside of the property. The applicant's request discusses that it's really impractical to use the property as zone C-one with a single-family dwelling. They would like to add a new structure to that. Actually, single-family dwellings aren't even allowed in the C-one district, so this would do a couple of things. One, it would allow for the uses there, allow for them to expand their single-family home if they choose to do so. Secondly, it would also plan, allow for the planning of a future development at that particular site, with much more attention to this building being placed up closer to the street as opposed to in the rear of the property, which is where the more sensitive area is. With the C-one district, they'd currently have to set back, so this really helps them in terms of the future developability of that property along the street. The community services zoning district, which is what's proposed here, we feel is appropriate. It meets our city plan twenty-twenty-five, does not introduce potentially incompatible uses like, something like an urban thoroughfare might in this location, and the planning commission did vote to forward this to you with a recommendation of nine to zero, and we did verify, the original application was for urban thoroughfare. After that meeting, the planning commission did make a recommendation to go to community services, the applicant verified that that was fine with them as well, so we are recommending this zoning change to community services.
Comments, questions?
Just that I would like to table it in, we had talked about having Jeremy come to the Ward Four meeting.
Okay.
So you want to go to the second reading and then leave it there?
And leave it here, leave it there.
What public comment do we have on this? Come on up, Aubrey.
This is simply a question, on the community services and so forth, the change that would be made, it sounds like it might be a really smart thing to do in this case. My question is for, one, that the city attorney might be required to explain for us, is it, when the rezoning occurs, and in past years, we heard, well, we don't, we aren't allowed to discuss what the plan might be that a particular person, in this case, these are staff asking for these rezonings, and they're generally quite logically good, but in the case of an individual asking to rezonate his property, we've been told that you cannot expect them to reveal their actual plan until they get the rezoning, and that does make a difference if certain things in a rezoning, everybody say, that's great, but then they find out it's something else, and later, and they wish they'd come down and spoken about the rezoning. I wonder if that is city ordinance only, or if that requirement comes from state law or some other source?
It's not actually part of state law that I'm aware of, except that it would be something they certainly do not need to reveal. You, the city council can certainly look at the uses that are allowed on any zoning district, and there's a number of uses allowed, and they can look at that and see if the uses that that zoning district would permit are incompatible with neighboring uses, rather than looking at maybe what the actual proposal would be. So they, so, for example, we've talked about this in the past with various, sometimes controversial rezonings, Divinity Hotel kind of reminds me of that, and some things like that, that they should look at, when it's a straight rezoning, just look at the uses that would be permitted on there, and see if that would be compatible with the neighboring lots around there, and see if that would work. In this particular case, obviously, this has got regular commercial lots around it, so the only additional use that community services would have as opposed to its currently-zoned neighborhood commercial would be that it would allow residential uses. All of the uses in C-one would also be allowed in community services, so the only additional uses that would be allowed in this rezoning would be some residential uses, which probably are not real likely at that location on Martin Luther King.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Aubrey. Who else? All right, bring it back to the council, I assume we're going to have a motion, second, go to the second reading?
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion, second, go to the second reading. Summer, would you please call the role?
Tenet?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budra?
Yes.
Canyon?
Go ahead and vote.
Patty?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-eight thirty-five for approximately one and a fifth acres located at thirty-seven ten West Martin Luther King Boulevard, from C-one neighborhood commercial to community services.
Okay, we'll leave that on second reading. Number eleven, appeal, RZN eleven dash thirty-eight thirty-one two oh nine West Martin Luther King Boulevard, ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-eight thirty-one for approximately two point six-four acres located at two oh nine West Martin Luther King Boulevard from RMF twenty-four residential multifamily, twenty-four units per acre to C-one neighborhood commercial. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the zone classification of following described properties hereby changed as follows, from RMF twenty-four residential multifamily, twenty-four units per acre to C-one neighborhood commercial, as shown on exhibits A and B attached here to and made apart hereof. Section two, that's official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amended, reflects a zoning change provided in section one above.
Chair?
This property is located at the southwest corner of Martin Luther King Boulevard and Hill Avenue, so it's on the other end of MLK, closer to the intersection of Archibald Yale and MLK. It's undeveloped, it used to contain single-family homes. Actually, there are a number of lots, I think seven or eight lots platted within this, on this development. Our aerial photographs show at two thousand and two, two thousand and three, there were actually still single-family homes on the property. The applicant, it's about two point six-four acres, and the applicant originally requested to rezon the property from the existing RMF twenty-four to UT Urban Thoroughfare, which is what the planning commission considered. They have stated that their intent is to develop a portion of this property for a gas station, although, as we just discussed, a development plan is not something to be considered as part of this application. A number of zoning districts would allow for the intended use of the property, that includes Urban Thoroughfare, community services, C-one, C-two, I-one, and I-two, all those would allow for the type of use that this particular applicant's proposing. However, just because obviously any one of those districts allow for that use that the applicant's pursuing does not necessarily make it appropriate for that area. The existing zone, RMF twenty-four, is a form-based code requiring buildings to be placed along the street and a certain amount of the frontage covered by buildings. In addition, the majority of the property around this property is also a form-based district. They're either RMF forty, RMF twenty-four, or the Hill Place subdivision is also developed as a form-based. You may remember that was a PZD, and the development proposed at that time had the buildings placed up along the street with parking either beside or hidden behind. After review of the location of this property and following the city council's adopted policy of, as we just discussed tonight, making traditional town form the standard for development within the city of Fayetteville, staff recommended that the applicant maintain one of the form-based codes for their future development plan, so the development would be more in keeping with the current district's form-based requirements. In this case, we recommended community services as the most appropriate zoning district for this location due to the surrounding land use intensity and the compatibility with other zoning districts in this area. We did not support the Urban Thoroughfare district, that's not really on the table even tonight, because the applicant between the planning commission and the appeal changed their request to C-one, but we did not feel the Urban Thoroughfare district was appropriate. Urban Thoroughfare is more of a regional draw, and in this particular location at MLK and Hill, it's really serving sort of the surrounding neighborhoods, not necessarily a region alike along I-five forty or the previous one at Razorback and Razorback and fifteenth street, which is a major entry into the city. So we felt community services, which is a step down in intensity, would be appropriate in this location. You'll notice if you compare zone uses, that community services and C-one have very similar uses, and that was by design. When we created these form-based districts, we tried to look at comparable districts that would have the same types of intensity. The biggest difference in the intent and purpose statement, though, is the form of that development. We really took it to heart on that third goal that is established, I believe it's number three, yes, we will make traditional town form the standard, that's the form of development that should be the standard in most instances. And so those types of districts are what we generally recommend for rezoning applications where it's appropriate. And you all have questioned me sometimes here at the podium of if we did ask for a zoning district, a community-based, or a form-based zoning district, and we generally try to go through that exercise when we're proposing those types of applications. In this particular case, the planning commission did vote to forward to you a recommendation for community services. The applicant is appealing that decision. It's a little bit rare, normally it's a denial of an application that's coming out as an appeal. In this particular case, they recommended community services. The applicant doesn't agree with that particular zoning district and is asking for C-one, both of which would allow for a fueling station. The form is really the big difference in this particular case. We feel the C-one zoning district is much more of a conventional suburban development model, that in this particular case, with a number of form-based districts already around it, a form-based with your building up closer to the street, your canopies, or if it's a fueling station, your canopies might be up closer to the street. If it's not, if it's residential, or if it's a commercial or an office development, that would create a form that's more pedestrian-friendly and has a better urban environment than traditional town form. We did talk a lot about variances, and Kit's issued a memo about that. We completely agree, we don't make it a practice to make a recommendation to an applicant to go forward with the rezoning, that you then have to turn around and ask for all these variances. In our exercises with this particular property, we feel like it can be developed with a form-based code and not necessarily require variances. There are conditions unique to this property that aren't necessarily the same as other properties within the same area, which is one of the findings that you make as a variance application, but even with that in mind, we believe the property can be developed fully with the community services district. The current zoning district does not allow any type of commercial use, so that's the main change with this particular district, that it will go from simply a multifamily district to a mixed-use district allowing both commercial and residential uses, and we feel like that is an appropriate change in terms of use within this area. So, city staff's recommended community services, your planning commission has recommended seven to two for a community services district, and as I made you aware, the planning commission did not consider C-one, that was not part of their consideration as part of the zoning request, but we do recommend, we don't recommend the C-one, that was read in the ordinance, we recommend community services for this particular site.
What questions do we have for Jeremy on this?
Sorry, that's in the town branch neighborhood. I'm Aubrey Shepherd, and that watershed's getting really burdened, so I'm hoping whatever is allowed in this zoning, whichever one you choose, CS or NC, C-one, I just think it's going to be really tight that we keep the paving directed to some hydroic soil or relatively good soil on that slope there, and, because right below there, and it's all paved and curved and guttered, and no retention really of significance. The National Cemetery property has added to the watershed burden at Eleventh Street by the new grave sites on Hill Avenue. The, if the sale barn should be developed, water there comes across Government Avenue and goes over to run through the National Cemetery and out into the town branch at the Eleventh Street Bridge, and I noticed today, the city website says that work is going to be done on drainage upstream on Hill Avenue and Duncan area, and they're talking about pipe and gutter. I didn't see anything in there about holding any water up there, so it's just going to be a lot more coming down. So this is, whatever's done on that piece of property in question here for rezoning, if I can't do it, somebody's going to have to come down and talk about those issues because it's pretty tough for people like Leaf, Kenberg, and others who have property down there, and Mr. Sullins and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Sharp, I live in Ward One. I'm concerned about this appeal of the rezoning that they didn't get, that they didn't want. I think procedurally, it's really odd that they're appealing a decision rather than, if they wanted C-one from the beginning, they should have been honest about it and gone through from the beginning and asked for C-one. The planning staff, I've worked with them enough to know that they don't dictate what you can ask for, you can ask for any zoning you want, and then go through the procedure. So I think it's not appropriate for this to be handled in this way. I think that if C-one is what the applicant wants, they should go back to the planning commission and ask for that and allow full public comment. The second comment I want to make is that the form-based code, there's been a lot of discussion about it, and particularly discussion about, well, you know, that it might be spot zoning or arbitrary or something, but if it's spot zoning, it's the most public, common, intensive, time-intensive method of spot zoning I've ever seen. We started back even in two thousand and twenty, the plan, which was more than fifteen years ago. We went to the two thousand and twenty-five plan where we identified with out-of-town experts, with our own planning staff, with citizen input, what we want Fayetteville to look like and what we wanted it to be. And so this has been, this is not a matter of just some arbitrary capricious action on the part of planning staff. on the part of planning staff, it's some new toy. This is something that the citizens have asked for continually, and the aldermen have continually supported. The other thing that I think's relevant to this discussion is when the most recent form-based code categories were going forward, I was in the planning office for another reason. I said, "What in the world are you doing writing these new categories?" And they said, "The problem is, we get many people that want to put a gas station in or a car wash, and they can't get C2 zoning because everyone, all the citizens hate it because it's so ugly." You end up with a parking lot with a cheap building in the middle of it. It's not what people want Fayetteville to look like. And so they were continually having to turn away, you know, valuable businesses because we didn't have a zoning category that people would support. And so they essentially did these type of developers and business owners a favor by presenting a zoning category that mitigated between what they needed to build and what the citizens would accept. And so I think that it's certainly the duty of the business that wants to come in to try to meet us halfway, to try to make that pedestrian experience along Martin Luther King and Hill much better. I don't know if you've been down Hill Street lately, but a lot of work has happened there. That area's really coming along. Like Audrey Shepherd, I don't agree with some of the wetlands issues and the way that was handled with the Aspen Ridge development, but it has created a lot of vibrant student population. There are a lot of people that ride the bus there with the high school. There was a lot of people walking along east to west. So this really is an important area, and it could really go either way. It could end up looking like the corner of Sycamore and College, where we have, you know, one-story, cheap, fast-food buildings with parking lots around them, or it could look more like Fayetteville. And so I would urge you to stay with the staff's recommendation. At the very least, don't allow this sort of last-minute changing of the zoning they wished they'd asked for originally, and support South Fayetteville. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dennis Blind, I'm a CEI engineering for the applicant for this rezoning request, the appeal. This is before you tonight. Also with me tonight are representatives of the owners of the land, as well as representatives of the proposed buyers of the land, who are our client. And on behalf of our client, we respectfully request that the planning commission's recommendation of the subject properties being rezoned to Community Services be appealed. We request C1 neighborhood commercial for the following reasons. The existing zoning pattern in the immediate area supports C1. Our subject property, as Jeremy said, is in the southwest corner of Martin Luther King and Hill. Right across the street from us is C1 zoning on the north side. The northeast corner is C2. The southeast corner is I1, heavy commercial industrial. The existing zoning patterns along MLK also support, along this corridor, support C1. C1 is in compliance with the city plan 2025. To address the comments of the gentleman that spoke before me, we're not being deceitful at all. Members of our team met with planning staff on two different occasions prior to making application, and at both meetings, we were told flat out only form-based zoning would be considered. Don't even come in with an application for conventional, traditional zoning. This raised concerns. Additional meeting, we had extenuating circumstances due to the land use, and another gentleman spoke to that previously too, and Kit addressed it. Because of the land use, the extenuating circumstance that we have in a form-based zone, which we support in other locations, is being in compliance with the minimum billable street frontage requirement that either Urban Thoroughfare or commercial Community Services requires. Urban Thoroughfare requires the building to be 50% of the lot width. Community Services requires a building to be 65% of the lot width. And that's right out of the ordinance. Our user, proposed buyer of it, their business model, their building isn't that size, as we mentioned. It's a gas station convenience store. So we are told, go for a variance. Well, as a certified planner myself, when I go for a variance, I don't want to go for a variance that's grossly exaggerated from the requirements. I think that's ludicrous. We can't come even close to the requirements of the form-based zoning on the minimum billable frontage. We can't come close. Also, in your ordinance for the criteria for a variance, in Title 15 of the Unified Development Code, Chapter 156 Variances, subsection 15602, zoning regulations, item 3, resulting actions. It says that the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Our request for a variance would be exactly that, based on the results of our action requesting this form-based zoning that staff forced us into. So right there, it's thrown out. So it makes it very, maybe not impossible for a variance, but it makes it very hard. Staff has also commented that this property is composed of several lots. There are several tax parcels on our property. But a property line adjustment plat was approved back in 2005. So this is one lot that we're proposing to put our use on. We're not proposing to subdivide it for any other uses. It would just be for our client's use. So in summary, why form-based zoning does not work for this application is that the existing zoning pattern in the area supports C1, the extenuating circumstances of our land use and its non-compliance with both form-based districts' minimum billable street frontage requirement, the high probability of receiving a variance, or the high improbability, excuse me, of receiving a variance also with C1. It's our intent to incorporate low-impact development strategies for this site. And our proposed land use also is very ingress-egress sensitive, and a form-based zoning district contradicts the safe design model that has proven successful to our client's business model over the past 50 years. Form-based zoning districts cannot and should not be used as a blanket Band-Aid to fix a community's urban form. Form-based zoning should be used with strategic precision for specific planning areas, such as a well-defined neighborhood or redevelopment or development districts. Again, like I said, I'm a certified planner. I've been a professional planner for over 30 years. I have written form-based ordinances for many communities. I support form-based zoning districts and form-based ordinances, and applaud what Fayetteville's trying to do here and moving forward with. But trying to force a form-based zoning district at the intersection of MLK and Hill is an inappropriate location for the Community Services zoning district. I mean, in this case, it is not spot-on. So thank you very much for considering our appeal.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question. So, and I just need, I'm not clear on, and it's probably, everyone has explained it probably, but I'm just not clear on what is, what is it about the form base that doesn't allow that you're, what you're planning? What is it that doesn't fit? And I'm just not clear on that.
In the form base, they want the building up close to the street right of way. You know, put the building up front, very pedestrian and urban context format. That would throw the gas pumps behind the building in this situation for this specific user. So that flips the whole, you know, design process for a convenience store, gas station, convenience store, totally in reverse. So it creates ingress-egress problems. It also creates, like I said, with the minimum distance it's required, 50% for Urban Thoroughfare, 65% for Community Services. We can't reach that threshold. Their footprint is typically around 5,000 square feet. Let's say 50 by 100. That's just a typical, that's not everyone. So we would be so far off of the required size form of the building. Like I said at the beginning, I'd have to come in for such an exaggerated variance that the probability of it being approved is highly unlikely. And we're also totally against the criteria for a variance that's clearly specified in the ordinance.
Thank you. And then I have a follow-up question, I guess, for Jeremy. So, so, thank you. So, in the frontage discussion, in my mind, part of the, one of the uses is that you can have a filling station in this zoning. Okay. So for filling stations, you have, in my mind, there's more than just the building there. There's a footprint that's bigger than the building. Is the footprint not, I mean, there's also sometimes a roof that's bigger than the building. Is that not part of that percentage that he's talking about within this particular case? Is it just the box structure that is considered as part of the frontage within that frontage?
It certainly could be considered. I think it depends on how it's constructed, how it's designed. As an example, a parking garage is not necessarily an occupied building, but it was approved as part of a form-based code in the downtown design, does not really meet district requirements. And so that met the intent of that code, even though there's no real vertical walls or occupancy. I would consider this in a similar instance as part of that, part of that structure that would meet the frontage requirements.
What if there's no roof and it's just the footprint of the space? Is that not part of the frontage? So if you're putting a foundation or for, I mean, because gas stations go deep. It's not just, it's, there's a lot of stuff under the ground.
Let me read right from the ordinance itself. This is for Community Services, and it says that front, "The principal facade of the building shall be built within a build-to zone that is located between 10 feet and aligned 25 feet from the front property line." And then it says, "The minimum buildage, street frontage, 65% of the lot width." So that means the principal facade will have to cover about 2/3 of the lot width of the street frontage. And of course, you've got to keep in mind, this is not only a corner lot, but it's actually got a third street on it. And all of those are frontages. And the, the planning commission started adding them up and came out to where the building would have to be about 100 yards long along both Hill Street and Martin Luther King. Now, they thought at that point that a variance could be granted. And I said, "At that point, I did not think so, but I had not reviewed the variance chapter." And let me tell you what it says, 15602. It says, "A variance shall not be granted unless and until an applicant demonstrates" in their four or five things. One is special conditions. That special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved, and which are not applicable to other structures or lands or building in the same district, meaning in Community Services. Well, every building in Community Services is going to have to cover 65% of the frontage. That's one of the requirements. That's not peculiar. So they failed that first factor. The second factor is deprivation of rights. That literal interpretation of the provisions of the zoning regulations would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Well, no, no other properties in this district have the rights not to build up to the build-to line and cover 65% of the building frontage. So they failed that test. The fourth one is no special privileges. That granting the variance requested will not confer upon the applicant any special privilege that is not, that is denied by those chapters to other land structures or building in the same district. Well, no other building in that district has the privilege of not building up to the frontage line 65% along the frontage. And the final one is non-conforming uses. It says, "No non-conforming uses of neighboring land structures or buildings in the same district shall be considered grounds for issuance of a variance." Now, there is some form-based districts to the east of this by a block or two. And those certainly are not built up to the frontage line because they're old construction. They were all done under C1, C2, or I1, and so you have warehousing and things like that. And so that wouldn't normally comply. But because they don't comply, it doesn't mean that he has a right not to comply. So my opinion would be that there is no way that the Board of Adjustment could legally grant a variance in this particular case. And that's why in my memo, I told you, if you want to facilitate a development, you've got to do it. You can't count on the Board of Adjustment to change your zoning regulation where you require 65% of the building, the principal facade of the building, to cover the street right of way. And so that's, that's my comments on that. And normally, I try not to get involved in these, but I'm a little concerned about this one.
Just to get to the bottom line, with what you're saying right here, then Community Service is not appropriate?
I think it would not be appropriate for this. Everybody agrees that commercial activities such as they requested is the right thing to do. The planning department's recommended that, those kinds of activities. Planning Commission recommended a district that would allow those sorts of commercial activities, and they want those sorts of commercial activities. So that's not the issue about whether or not this sort of commercial activities would be allowed here. The only issue is, will we actually allow that to happen? Or because of the way the land is, will we, will we follow the planning department's recommendation in zoning in such a way that I think it cannot happen?
If I could respond, I guess, in this particular case, I think we respectfully disagree with how to administer the code. The First Baptist Church, for instance, is constructing a brand-new addition on College Avenue. They came to us, it used to be a PZD, they came to the city. They said, "We want to be a form-based code so we can do this project up close to the street." We said, "That's a great idea." It was rezoned, they came through with a proposal. They're now constructing their project. They have three frontages, similar situation. They have a Dixon Street frontage, a College Avenue frontage, and a Highland Avenue frontage. They're not building any part of their project on Highland Avenue. They're building all their frontage along, along College Avenue. We felt it met the letter of the law in terms of the way we wrote the code. In this particular case, we would apply it very similarly. I think that we could utilize the canopy as part of the frontage reform or the facade of that, of that structure. And we would apply it in that, in that way. So that's at least our position on how we've, how we've interpreted and administered the code for at least four or five years now.
Nathan?
Can I clarify what you just said? You mean to say that you would choose one of the three frontages to apply that part of the code to, and the canopy would count?
Generally, and I think if you look at the, for instance, the, this particular project, if they're looking at the entire, the entire front, the entire lot for development, we would look at all of that as frontage and try to define which percentage of, what the minimum, the minimum linear feet of frontage would be required on a particular lot. From our meetings, I haven't spoken with Mr. Blind, and my staff's met with others. In their meetings, they did not discuss utilizing this entire two-and-a-half-acre site. Their sites are generally much smaller. The one under construction right now, Township's about an acre. I think usually they're about an acre to acre and a half, unless there's a different model that's being proposed on this particular property. I will say for the record, in defense of my staff, we don't force applications of any kind. Anyone is welcome to sign their application and put on the dotted line what zoning district that they are preferring. We certainly do give recommendations on what we can support and what we won't support, but that doesn't necessarily mean that an applicant is forced to make that, make that decision. So I just, for the record and in defense of my staff, I want to make sure that's clear.
Well, Jeremy, also just...
So, if this rezoned, Community Services, and they decided that, and the process had moved far enough along that you had said, "This is the requirement," and they disagreed with it. If they were only going to build on an acre of that two-and-a-half acres, would that change what your requirement is? Would it be different than what Kit is saying it would be? And do they have other options available to them? Like, could they split the lot at that point and change the requirement?
Like, there are any number of options, to be honest with you. With a parcel of this size, our understanding at least was that the corner was going to be secured for a fueling station, the rest of the property could be sold off for future retail or some other type of development allowed within those zones.
What's the minimum lot size for Community Services if they chose to split it?
There's not, there's not a minimum lot size.
Is there one for Urban Thoroughfare, for C1? So really, it wouldn't matter what the zoning, what it got zoned. So really, it wouldn't matter what the zoning, what it got zoned, they could split it however they wanted, only build on as much as they wanted, and only have a facade as long as they wanted, as long as they structured the lot divisions how they, how they liked.
There are zero-foot side setbacks, so you can build right up to a property line. Yes.
So what I'm hearing is that there's a part of the process that hasn't been acknowledged, or possibilities that haven't been acknowledged, and that really, community services would work for the design models that they have in other locations and that they'd like to put here. But the possibility of splitting the lots after this rezoning has happened hasn't been considered or acknowledged.
Okay.
Could I respond to that? Before you is a rezoning, though. It's not a lot split or anything else like that. You have to look at the property that's before you. If you looked at the draft of the 2030 plan and you looked at the form-based code, in the draft, it talks about how that is an option, and that, you know, it's, it's there to help developers. And I hope that the city council will not decide that all, you know, that, that you are going to always require this, and that you're never going to allow a developer to zone that they would, they would prefer, especially when everything around this is C2, C1, and I1. There's no form-based around here. The RMF 24 was only recently made form-based. It was not form-based probably when the developer, original developer, got this, but that was changed recently by the city council. And, and across the street, there's RMF 40, that's across, away from them, across a railroad track. So it's really not what I would say is within this particular area to be very carefully considered, to be compatible. But anyway, that's all. I, I thought form-based zoning, when it was being proposed, was being proposed as an option that a developer could choose, and that way, he could get quicker development. That was what I thought was being presented to the council. If they went with form-based, then they wouldn't have to go through as many steps, it could be administratively proposed, but I didn't realize it was going to be something that was going to be forced upon developers.
Well, I guess I took a different perception of the intent of the form-based codes, and that was to properly, or to zone a property such that no matter who owned it, it would still fit the form of the surrounding areas. And I respectfully disagree that the surrounding properties, I think we need to look farther than just adjacent properties or what's just across the street to decide what constitutes an appropriate use for this location. What I, I've read the memo here, and there are two things I want to say, two last things that I want to say. The first is that it seems like the main point of the memo, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it is not appropriate for the city council to place an undue hardship on an applicant. And I, I'm of the opinion that since the, since there are options that would still allow this project to be built with community services that have not been acknowledged, I think if we are to acknowledge those, then there is no hardship on the developer. There are options besides just a variance here that they can pursue that are less painful or even painless. And the second thing I wanted to say is, this is the last part, the last paragraph of the conclusion of this memo, and I'm going to make a motion to table this because of what this says here. It says, "In addition to language in our long-term plan and any personal preference for a form-based zoning district, the city council should have and express reasoned analysis of why the applicant's requested neighborhood commercial zoning should be denied." I agree with that statement. I think that, that reasoned analysis is ready to be developed. I think that we have the evidence there. I think Mr. Sharp spoke to some of that whenever he talked about the rich history of discussion whenever it comes to this property, and how old that discussion has been, and how much public input and government support has gone into these considerations with the future land use map. So I don't think that we could call a decision to rezone this as community services, one based on personal preference or, or one that was done arbitrarily. So I'm going to make a motion to table this, or I guess to hold it on the first reading, based on, you know, I think that this is a good debate to have, and I personally, and maybe some others on the council, need a little bit more time to properly form that reasoned analysis that our attorney suggests we should have in order to make this decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, before we vote on that.
Just have to second it, just leave it on the first reading.
Yeah.
I spoke a little too quickly.
Is there any more public comment? We're still on that, believe that or not.
I'll call you up.
Next week. That'll be fine.
I'll call you up, Rob. If you would like to speak, I'll let you in.
That's the only time you get to speak again, Rob.
I'll hold you to that. Two things that I think are irrelevant here is, one of them is, two weeks ago, I was working on a piece of property zone downtown General, which is a form-based code, and the, my client wanted to put a convenience store gas station on the site, and they didn't have a lot of time to, to make a decision. So I went on Google Earth, I picked up a convenience store gas station from Bentonville, Arkansas, put it on the site, turned it backwards, and put it along the property line, and easily met downtown General, which is a much more stringent, stringent category. And I think what, it's easy to say, we're talking about a football field long, or 200 feet long, or whatever, but when you have those two frontages, you get more frontage, but you also, when you put the building on the corner, you get, you get to cover more footage with the same square feet of footprint. And so I think it's disingenuous of the applicant saying, "We just can't do it. It's, you know, we're going to do this, we're, we know it's going to be a gas station, it can't be done." And they haven't shown any drawings to anybody showing it can't be done. And two weeks from now, I'll have a drawing that shows how it can be done, will meet all the city codes. And the other thing, I really object to the idea that light imprint development techniques like rain gardens are a fix for something like this. I mean, that's like putting the lipstick on the pig, saying, "Well, we're going to do a rain garden, so it's going to be okay." And that's, that's not going to do any good to anyone walking along Martin Luther King to have a little, you know, a reed bed for the gas station. So, thank you for letting me speak again.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okey-dokey, I'll bring it back to the, I'm sorry, Mark, you had a question.
Well, I think regardless, we're not really supposed to talk about a specific use of the property. We have to look at the property, we have to look at the surrounding property, and we have to look at the zoning based on the merits of the property, not the development. And so that's what I'm thinking of here. Of course, all of it matters. And so I just wanted to say that we've got to look at the use of this property. It is two acres. We know that the previous come-and-go that we've looked at is only an acre. We know that it can be split, but we've got to look at the total use of this property that we're considering as the rezoning when we're evaluating what is appropriate for the use of the property. So while I appreciate the suspected use of the property and all the, we have to look at the probability that it may not happen, and what is the appropriate use in case someone comes along and wants to use the rest of the acreage. That's, that's what I'm thinking. Thanks.
Good point.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it too late to request a council tour of the property? Could we go?
No, because it's going to be left on the first reading.
So could we, would, Jeremy, I'd like to go with Jeremy and his applicants to be there.
We schedule that.
And if Jeremy says, "Okay, that'd be great." Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is everybody good? Okay, we will leave this on the first reading. That concludes the exciting evening, and is there anything else? Any announcements anybody wants to make? Okay.
Four meeting, Monday night.
Oh, yeah.
Next Monday night.
Four meeting next Monday night.
Seven o'clock.
Where's he going to be at? Room 111?
111.
All right. Thank you all, we adjourn.